Went up to the bar and I was like, "Man, I know you don't do that. I really hate doing that. Last night I had to." Man.
We live over here.
See, that's that bullshit. See, Paul would've said, "Mike's alive." See, he tried to go live. "Hey, everybody, I'm going live. Get off eighteen." He trying to go, he trying to go live so he could hurry up and capture the point. My pay is, if you don't give a damn, I don't give a fuck.
Oh, my God. Everything. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I am? Nah, not right now.
Not right now?
Not right now. Well, right now, I'm waiting on them to get back with me. They been reporting my pay so much, man. That's what you gotta, um, once you, um, you gotta get, uh...
He in YouTube, yeah.
Nah, see, when you monetize, I got, I got enough people to do it, but... Yeah, you supposed to have that, but what it is, they been reporting my pay. So, they told me forty-six weeks they gonna get back with me, so I got like a couple more weeks.
They been reporting YouTube pay?
Yeah, yeah, and my Facebook pay.
They reporting everything.
The shows is...
I mean, what are YouTube pays for?
I don't know, maybe the shows I was doing ain't nothing I happily did. Thank you, Shaunice Vaughn. There ain't nothing I did, it's just that them jokers, they ain't been playing. They might just get mad at something. I ain't might've said, no telling, it might just might've said. Truth teller, they don't like no truth. Tell the truth for all those jokers, they gonna be crazy. Benny, thank you, you bet. Yeah, I'll upload it. Right, right, right. Yeah, I'mma upload it, you know, tonight. Yeah, yeah, I upload as soon as I look. Got you, got you, got you, I'mma work on it.
Okay.
As soon as they let me know.
Okay.
A little juice on them, though.
Oh, nah, you good. You good.
Oh, Laquita, yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
You good. I'm, 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 I'm right here.
To Shaun, thanks for bumping in. I mean, thanks for tapping in, y'all, now we giving y'all the pre-council, as you can see. I thank you, uh, Asaya Aquil, Mama Aquil.
Uh-oh, you good, you alright, you good.
I heard up here mentioning all type of stuff, huh? Man, I ain't never seen nothing like this.
I get tired of eighteen media trying to take over. They think, they think they just over everything. They come in and just bulldogging, man. Just throwing balls, man.
We just, uh, we just a little small time. We just a little small time now. We just a little small time company. That's all that y'all can see. Now they gonna come, well, what you think today gonna be like?
I don't know, man. You know, every day is a surprise, man, this job. You know what I'm saying? Every day is a surprise. Surprise, surprise, surprise.
You ain't lying. The whole little crew together.
This is bad, man.
Family, I'm telling y'all, this is the reason. We need a redo over. For February, we gotta take, we gotta get March now, because we done blew this. We done blew Black History Black History.
Yeah, Black History, man.
Flint blew it off, it's real.
We gotta start all over.
We need March.
We gotta start all over, man.
We need March.
Matter of fact, June should be Black History Month.
Nah, we need, we, we need, we need a whole...
You know what, either May or June. Uh, see, a lot of people don't know that one day it started by African American, so, Black so this. Did you notice? So, that should've been March, and then, June 10th, that should've been the month. I mean, just something, man. Why February? What happened in February? What major event in African American history made February Black History Month? It's a short, not a beautiful.
Yeah. You can't, you can't, you can't hold up on that, man. How y'all doing again, family? I'm back, as y'all see, the Three Amigos, who was destroying Flint City Council. What up, brother Clyde, Flint Casket, Elizabeth Finney, Zax, Zay, Shamell, Shamel, Melissa, I see you in the building. How you doing, Ms. Barnes? How you, thank you, Ms. Barnes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, brother, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, brother Clyde.
I'm John Carroll. Happy birthday, Nikki George.
Happy birthday, Nikki.
Thank you, thank you.
You were born on a very special day.
Yes, ma'am.
February 7th.
Yes, ma'am.
Today is actually my little sister's heavenly birthday. So I got on my purple.
Well, thank you, heavenly birthday. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, thank you, too.
And she was all about love.
We try to do that over, over here, we try. It's hard. But I think we need to do over for Black History Month. Flint has really destroyed it this year for, for the U.S.A. We blew it. We blew it.
Yeah.
We blew it.
Well, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be really nice today and sweet and loving. Hello, how are you? Nice seeing you.
Aw, shit. That's why, right now, why it's blue right there.
Hey, Paul ain't even here, man.
Paul ain't.
Nah, Paul, Paul ain't, she ain't even here.
Good, 'cause I'm blocking all this. Eight-one-O Flint, thank you, thank you, thank you, you know what, any, any of them coming... But I'mma say this. Any of them, uh, Paul says something, I'm blocking them. I'm blocking them, they can watch, but they better not say nothing. They better not say nothing. Nah, they can watch, they... But like, share, and subscribe. I don't even wanna hello, just watch.
As long as they don't start going back and forth, these people on my page just trying to say, "Uh, you're a dumbass." We have problems with that, man, because everybody, but, you know, they do...
I don't even wanna hear them speak, just watch. They gonna be like, "We had to sit there and watch this foolish five cut up?" That's what I want, one of them to watch.
Oh, man, they hurt you, man. They, 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 they gonna be on...
Thank you, Sherri, I...
They, they gonna be on everybody's face.
Cause Paul ain't show up.
Paul ain't, Paul ain't here, man.
They hurt.
Y'all gotta let me know that early, man. If there's anything, just, y'all gotta let me know early.
Oh, I'm watching it, 'cause I wanna see. Ariel. This is the Tell Truth Cam. Oh, I gotta go back to airtime, man. Oh, the parking is shit. Oh, you know what, Angie Mac, I'mma, I'mma be honest with y'all. This morning, I would've, but my girl got, she, uh, got six. I been at the, I was at the hospital about three-thirty this morning. I had just left it to come do the show and go back out there with her. So, really, you know, so I ain't really did nothing. I just went home and fed the kids and said, "I'm just leaving the hospital now." She had a kidney stone, so that's why she, she in the hospital with a kidney stone. So, I been at the hospital since like three-thirty this morning. So, yeah, that's why I ain't really did no, did nothing, but I said I'mma come down here and record a council. And then when I leave here, I'mma run back out there. If they let me in. Oh, the parking, you can park in the, right now, they got some parking in the front still. Wow, when I came in, uh, the side, it might be some parking in the front, uh, Deborah.
Yeah, taco?
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, leave me. Oh, no problem, Deborah.
Hey, y'all, when she come back here, I'mma show y'all. Wait, matter of fact, matter of fact, there it is. I thought, I thought from top west airline. Hey, y'all, look, we got the stewardess, we got the stewardess up in here today. We got a stewardess up in here today. Look, she got a little life box.
Let me show y'all people. Not a lot of people up in here right now. Not a lot of people in here. You see the administration is back there now. But as you can see, administration back there. Paul ain't though. You got, uh, Ariel, huh?
You see me on there?
Yeah, 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 you on here.
Oh, America.
Give eight, eighteen a shout out, Ariel.
Hello, eighteen. I'm Ariel Mitchell again, here for the council meeting. Me and, me and our man is gonna set the record straight tonight, especially with them peoples over in Haiti. Call themselves breaking up Black folk from fighting, but the UN don't want them to, nothing to do with them, but, uh, Jimbo Kenyatta from Kenya, we wanna say two-hundred, think, two thousand of his popo over there, but they, the UN said that's not a good idea, you're gonna cause a racial war, but you see how whiteies do when the, the black people try to help each other, they always act up? And that's enough, 'cause y'all listen, stay tuned.
He have hella words of encouragement, I can tell you this. He have words of encouragement, that's all I can tell you. Yeah, he shit like he say every time. The doctors try to help each other, the white man. Man.
How did you get in jail?
Nah, I gotta go up there and get water. I'm gonna go up there and get water right now.
Grab me.
I got you. They got a lot of work they gotta do today, though. I'm gonna see you, man. A seven right there. Yeah, I'm just saying.
I'm over at, uh, commissioners meeting, and, uh, the hell you gonna get an account, check your account, check it at home? Then they sell, they give it to the state and not accounting. Man, some dumbasses. Hey, this is the only, this is the only committee meeting?
Man, you think they finna get the walk twenty-eight? Yeah. I mean, yeah, they gonna get to... I know you gonna go and carry it up to the three hours.
Right, right. What is Walker, Walker pay? Is that worker pay on Walker? What is Walker? I'm not working.
Right, right. Uh, five-thirty, I think it's supposed to start, family, five-thirty. Oh, no, it's supposed to start at five o'clock, family, I'm sorry about that. That meeting supposed to start at five o'clock.
Right, right.
Man. Why is all this re-allocation? Yeah, I'm looking at that too. That, that Kennedy White Center, they finna get sixty, up to the salvation hour, six hundred and fifty-five. They getting on twenty-five. White Center.
Oh, so, so, that's why, that's why. Yeah.
They finna get a salvation hour with six hundred and fifty-five.
They what? Oh. How much they give in?
Six hundred and fifty-five.
I mean, that'd be cool, that'd be cool, but, but still, though, why you gotta give it to them? Why can't you just, uh, pay it in their account?
Right now, who all, I see, and everything.
Somebody, 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 somebody gotta pay the same like this. T-Mo weird, like...
Oh, my God.
Paul, he stupid, man, he stupid.
They gotta get a, they gotta get a popo.
Don't be, don't be sitting next to the damn, uh, uh, don't be sitting next to the emergency exit.
With the doors locked off.
If you ain't gonna, uh, if you feel uncomfortable, you don't wanna sit next to the emergency door. Uh, hey, Ty, you telling me about the emergency door? She dressed like a stewardess today.
Man, you are terrible, man. You gonna get us put out.
Hey, y'all, five o'clock, man, I gotta go pick up my granddaughter, let's go. Let's go. They wait for their puff boat, man. Hey, they wait for that puff.
They don't get that puff boat, I know, this shit getting...
I wouldn't even talk about it, I'd just be like, "Oh, alright." Yeah, "Oh, alright."
Yeah, they finna get, you see the street pump station, uh, eight-hundred thirty-five, uh...
Jeff, what? Yeah, yeah, we be at Roadhouse, man. You had, you had a birthday party. But that's why I know, you, uh, you know my cousin.
Yeah. Yeah, they gonna, they gonna pay, that's gonna increase the election worker pay, I think I'm finna get in there. I'm gonna be election worker. They increasing their pay.
Hey, Ty, you, hey, Ty, you dressed like getting Christie love, man. Oh, man, I got some, hey, y'all, hey, I'm hungry. It's five-twenty. It's five-twenty.
They ain't starting, this is for nothing, listen.
What time is it? Yeah, they waiting on that. Ty, your burns is beautiful. Whatever. Hey, Ty, Ty, somebody say you beautiful. Yo, right. Yo, dollar bill. Dollar bill, man, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what you, uh, what you, you know what I'm saying?
Terrible, man. Man, they is terrible with this. They said, boy, they killing it, damn. They killing, they said, I seen that, that, that T-Mo weird.
Oh, yeah, T-Mo weird, collection.
That's, they named...
Oh, they on your page, too?
They named they something. Lord have mercy.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, this is, this is a rough one here, baby. They said no, they don't know. Tell them they waiting on that.
It is five-twenty, I'm going to get there for a seventh, and I hereby call this meeting of the finance committee to order a roll call.
Hey, they still gotta have agendas.
It's the latest I have.
No matter, because in the chart.
Present.
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 Hey, both our cameras can be...
You have six members present?
There are six members present. Our clerk has an announcement.
Sir, Clark?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to introduce to the council formally and everyone else, our deputy city clerk, Ms. Alicia Brown. Um, she just started this week. Brandt Township, Monday Township, and lots of other experiences. I just wanted to introduce her formally.
Welcome, we're glad you're here. Um, as House clean, um, the manner is that our laser number hitting in today, so our clerk will be maintaining the clock. And please remember that, um, listen for her, and there was no extension of time. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and go to...
I'm sorry, I just need to point out we, there's a typo.
Okay.
Resolution number on the agenda, four-zero-zero-three-two, except for this brand, that's for the debate that you do. But, uh, I don't know why that record popped up, it's different. The, the resolution is correct and we prepare. So, um, that is not the resolution, four-zero-two. What resolution? Two-four-zero-zero-three-two. Four-zero-zero-three-two is actually... Sorry, Madam Chair, this is in our mind expected agenda.
Is that the one for, um, the Flint Fire Police Department Training Complex?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we don't have it on the agenda.
It's on, it's in the deck.
That's the deputy, uh, clerk.
Oh, right.
Laquita.
Two-three, two-four-zero-zero-three-two. So, without objection, I will correct the agenda to, um, the Flint Fire Police Department Training, um, the title is Resolution to Hubble, Rock, and Clark for preliminary and conceptual design of the Flint Fire and Police Department Training Complex. I don't know, I'm looking at...
Madam Chair, can you tell us what order is supposed to be on this agenda?
What order?
Yes, 'cause it's, it's not like an actual agenda either.
The two-four-zero-zero-three-two is, according to the, um, clerk, is actually the wrong description for that resolution. I got that part, you're saying you're correcting it, it's on the same where? It's been going the same order. It's in the packet in the order. Does that make sense?
We have two seconds for my question, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, is the, if you have a two-sided copy, you have it. If you have a one-sided copy, I don't see the resolution.
We'll give that to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, can you tell us we do not have the correct packet, what order it is supposed to go in?
It will be after two-four-zero-zero-three-one. The budget amendment for Police Department. You don't have that one either.
So, the packet that I have goes from five through nine, and then it goes to, and when I say five through nine, nine, I mean, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and then it goes thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
It's on the second page, I think that's on page four, which you're missing.
Okay.
Do you have it?
I don't have that before. Um, I have it pulled up, yes.
Okay. Is that, is there, is there anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, due to the clerk. We got, we gonna have, um, I don't have my sheet, is, is that being told? Are you ready to get us a copy, because I'm missing half of? Yes. Okay. There should be five, seven, or eight, five, or... Five, that right, so I wanna make sure that, 'cause I mark it on my agenda.
Would you like to take, um, recess, why we did that?
No, I think we got, we got, yeah, yeah.
We have pretty heavy agenda.
Yeah, we've got public speaking, I don't, I think the public, right?
And that's what I wanted to know. That's what my thought was, too, as well. All right, so now it's time for public speaking. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes to address the city and council on any subject.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Ariel Mitchell. My name is up fifty-nine East Lane in American. I wanna address the, the peoples of Flint about the Kennedy Center over on Prince Road. We got twenty-five thousand dollars. We got twenty-five thousand dollars, but you, but that's a stack, but you rather have fifty thousand dollars to spread out from, we give the Kennedys in there fifty, twenty-five thousand, you can get the Hassels in there fifty thousand, all of them, you know, anyway, but, welcome to the new clerk. What's my board, what she went, she was right there, but, uh... Anyway, these, well, like I say, Flint, Michigan, you gonna see Flint riots again, like it was in nineteen fifty-five, when, when it was booming and jumping, General Motors decided to go out, because they didn't pay their income tax, they promised us one hundred years, and you see what happened then. By any means possible, we the people gonna come out victorious, regardless of what Third Ward Congressman Murphy said, taking that thirteen thousand dollar limo and stuff, and trying to build Jeffrey Park up over there, they had about four state patrols over there yesterday, looking at me, my house was directly in front of the fields, I thought they were looking for Murphy, with some, uh, the state police, I thought they had me, trying to make Sabrina Park, they're supposed to be built up, just like Mercer Field House, and Murphy act like he don't know how to, he get choked up like he don't know how to get his stomach like he done on Murphy, at, at Mercer Field House, just like Holbrook Street, the preacher is upset with him, because he up there, don't know how to, don't get the people, the money here, have to clean up all that junk around there, man, what you look at somebody when somebody talking, addressing you, Murphy, man, eh, but anyway, peace to the Hades, over there fighting, the U.N. don't know how to break them up, but, the President of Tina wanted to send two thousand of his police over here, but, the Americans, because they have no mercy on, they don't care who fighting, they, and they said it's not a great idea, but, we will come out of there victorious, because the, the doctors, he's, it's coming over, the borders and all, the white people's getting, I mean, and you know us. I listen to my son.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Zaramski, I live in the sixth floor, um, you know, I come in here and I talk before, you know, about the police, and we still have issues with that, but, what's really disappointing is, you know, watching the Ethics Accountability Board, um, in fact, they're not even really being ethical and accountability, and then we have some council, um, members, um, who just go in there and complain, we had this little Bill Lewis that went in there, pretty sure she was, I think she was complaining about Dennis Biker, I think, then we had Candace Moushott that went in there with Doug Matthews, only tell her part of the truth, not the whole truth, right, um, you know, if you wanna talk about what being threatened, at least talk about what you put out there about Tanya Burns, and you're putting all this nonsense out, and everybody does have screenshots, uh, even though he likes to not, um, you know, then Quincy, he went in there yesterday, did his little speech, and then ran right out the door, I mean, I... Miss Shasta Little has a job, apparently, she deserves that job, okay, and, because she's, she's an honest person, unlike a lot of you, because you guys like to, obviously, do business with Ashley Capital, and get your money where, um, I mean, if you got fifteen hundred worth of candy, I mean, who knows what else they gave ya, I mean, we really don't have a clue, I mean, they funneled it through Capital or, um, Habitat for Humanity for, um, Quincy, so, I mean, who else knows what everybody got, I mean, unless you all won the lottery, I mean, last time I checked, that one resident is getting a roof on their house, not getting no, no home improvements, but we're gonna hit these beautiful parks, so, is that where we're gonna have to live, when we lose our homes, because of the bad deals that you do for the city? I mean, I, I know that you're looking at me and smiling, I mean, we all know you got your money, honey. And I sit there, and I keep telling you, because... So, more people need to grow some balls and start stepping up, and say what they're feeling.
Great, man.
Because seriously, Quincy, you, you, you have balls at times, and then other times, it's like, they went, and they get, they drop right out, so I'm gonna put you in your place and tell ya, hey, this is how you gotta do things, so, I mean, seriously, I mean, if you don't wanna look good in orange, I suggest you all start doing it right. I don't look good in orange, and I would never go against God, I would not commit anything, thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Nenek, and I'm here on behalf of me and my mother, my mother is not a resident of Flint, but I saw, uh, something that we just mentioned on Facebook, on Liddell Page, and somebody named Linda L. Pendleton. My mother don't have anything to do with what's going on between you or whoever, so, just keep our name out of Facebook and all that, we don't have anything to go that's, that's going on, my mother did not appreciate that, so I guess it's your page, or somebody that's linked to your page, that's put our names, the littles, said that we, somebody got a job, I don't know, but I appreciate it if you just leave our names out of what y'all got going on here, because we have nothing to do with that, just do what y'all supposed to do for the city of Flint, and all the other mess, leave it alone, that's all I gotta say.
Good afternoon, my name is Jamie Winkler, I am with the Salvation Army, and tonight, uh, we are on, on your agenda, and I wanted to let you know that I'm here to answer the questions that you have. The Salvation Army has a very rich history here in the city of Flint, for over a hundred and thirty years, uh, we have been serving the most disadvantaged citizens, offering tailored programs, aimed to alleviate hardship, um, that is, uh, that many people experience. I run a program called the Harbor Light System for the Salvation Army, uh, we have, uh, five different regional campuses, and back in twenty sixteen, uh, I had the privilege of starting a, a new and somewhat innovative program called Medical Respite, and, uh, we brought that to the city of Detroit, it became a very successful program, the program is designed to help homeless individuals that are healthy enough to be discharged from the hospital, uh, but need recuperative care. Um, oftentimes, uh, homeless individuals that are in inpatient care at the hospital, uh, presents a number of challenges for the hospital to safely discharge patients, and so, uh, the Salvation Army has this program, uh, that is a, um, an asset for the hospital system, and for those that need recuperative care. Oftentimes, uh, homeless individuals that are in this type of setting, um, are discharged to either the street, or they are discharged to a homeless, uh, shelter, that is not very well, uh, capable to meet the immediate needs of someone that is recuperating. Uh, a number of patients are, are dealing with, um, uncontrollable diabetes, um, and they may have had a part of their foot amputated, they need to keep their foot above their heart, they need to have insulin, it needs to be refrigerated, uh, those, uh, that are dealing with, uh, palliative care, or those that are dealing with chemotherapy, dialysis, it's, uh, very, very hard for, uh, the homeless, uh, network, uh, to deal with those needs. And so what the Salvation Army, um, has to offer is a, a, a program that specializes in recuperative care, so we do this through integrated care management, uh, discharge plan coordination, medication management, education on self-care, we wanna teach, uh, to individuals that come into our program, how to navigate to the least healthcare system, or improved health. So, we're really grateful for the opportunity, um, to answer the questions that you have tonight, and I'm very grateful, and we hope that, um, people support this, uh, so we can introduce the service, uh, right here in Flint. We're able to do this through the great generosity of Hurley Medical Center, that is offering a Dutchy Center to the Salvation Army, we have a thirty-year agreement with them, the building is forty years old, needs, uh, quite a bit of work, uh, to get, uh, the building where, um, we can actually have residents, um, at that facility, so we appreciate your support, and so...
Thank you. Are there any other public speakers?
Hello, everyone, my name is Doug Matthews, I'm a retired social worker from the South Ward. In our community conversations and debates, the words we choose have profound implications, shaping how we perceive and engage with one another, but words can be twisted and weaponized. A recent incident involving our city attorney, William Kim, and his use of the term "housekeeping," a word universally recognized in business and day-to-day interactions as referring to routine matters, has brought this issue sharply to focus. This term, used in good faith and without any ill intent, became the catalyst for unfounded and nearly hysterical accusations of racism by Ms. Burns, both in a public podcast, and subsequently in a speech before the EAB. William Kim, by all accounts, is a good family man and an effective city attorney, he is well-respected in the legal community, to say that he intended to belittle or demean the temporary household person as a domestic or maid, is a gross misinterpretation and a willful distortion of reality. Ms. Burns propagated this lie, aiming to incite outrage and division, disregarding the plain meaning of Mr. Kim's message. Shockingly, Ms. Burns went on to politically exploit the historical struggles and achievements of black women who performed domestic works under challenging conditions, their legacy is deserving of our respect and admiration, not political manipulation. The deliberate trashing of Attorney Kim by Ms. Burns, akin to a cobra injecting venom into its victim, was intended to sow discord and division, rather than illuminate truth or foster unity. By twisting the meaning of "housekeeping," Ms. Burns not only dis- disrespected Mr. Kim, but also dishonored the memory of countless individuals we aim to celebrate, especially during Black History Week. Such actions erode the foundation of trust and respect essential for community governance, promoting division instead of unity. The integrity of our public discourse is critical, as we strive for a just and equitable society. Ms. Burns, you must resist your inclination to weaponize race, gender, and now black heritage for payback, or for, uh, personal or political advantage. As the, as Flint moves forward, let's all commit to elevating our conversations, to honoring the legacies of those who paved the way, and to fostering a community where every discussion uplifts and unites, okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Chantae Tring Smith, I was told that my business, Yovo Rescue, was on the agenda for resolution tonight for our partners, um, but I don't see it on there, but it's still to be reviewed. But I was told that it was still okay for me to speak, um, so, on behalf of my organization, I'm the executive director, um, it centers, uh, black and brown families as far as lactation and dual services, I'm actually supposed to be at a birth right now, and I have somebody backing me up, um, but we've been serving, um, Flint, Genesee, family families for over ten years, um, and it's my passion, I'm looking to extend the team, because of course, you know, blackness and health, of course, is an issue, I am the only black lactation consultant in Flint, I believe that representation matters, I've been a black lactation consultant in Flint for seven years, almost now, um, and so I'm looking to diversify, um, and grow my business, and be able to serve more black and brown families, of course, I serve all families in Flint, but I wanted to make sure, um, I spoke on behalf of that when it does come up for resolution. It's called Yovo Lactation and Dual Services, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Antoine Livel. I was debating on if I was gonna speak or not, but I do know that I do deserve to be here, let me first start off by saying, I didn't know that Black History Month was reduced to a week now.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and secondly, Tanya Burns, she is a good family person, too, she's a good mother, a family mom. And I reference that to the whole Shaxton Little incident, because my name is Antoine Livel, that was my sister that spoke, and three people I want to address with the host from Linda Pendleton, that's Liddell Lewis, Judy Priestley, and Eva Werbin that are not here, and the reason I chose that is because the comments stated that Tanya Burns was Shaxton's first cousin, which is not true, so you're being tagged to lies, and I know this because my name was added to that list. Now... Tanya Burns' daughter was brought up earlier this year by Linda Pendleton, and Liddell, that's your Facebook friend, you're my Facebook friend, we have known each other for years, you in fact stayed at my home when I lived in Philadelphia, Philadelphia, you've been to my home several times, I've actually helped you on several events to move the city forward, I even brought something that I knew treasured, that you gave me from Officer Field Park, Service Park Neighborhood Association, things that you were doing to move the city forward, and I applaud that. But I have to draw the line somewhere, because you as a, what I would say as a friend, how could you allow somebody to drag Tanya Burns' family into this, and not say anything, from calling her daughter monkey, to tell them lies about my family? Yet, sometimes you have to stand up for something, and I truly did not wanna be here, because I've talked to each and everyone, well, not each and every one, time here, my husband Jerry, talked to you every once in a while, and Liddell, and I said I wanna remain neutral, but then, the lies start falling, and the lies start dragging other people into this, we gotta take a stand on this right, and we can't allow people to call other members of council horrendous names, like, you can sit up there and call each other whatever you want, that's what you all do, but if you wanna discipline people in the audience, then start with the man that's calling my cousin a pink person, or a punk. That's not right.
Thank you.
I'm not waiting to address you, you're racist and dumbass, that's what I think of it, I hate when white people, not all white people, but people like him, sit up here and try to tell me how to feel, what I should feel as a black man, if I feel that you are oppressing me, if I feel that it is racist, what you are doing, I have a right to speak out, you don't have a right to tell me that I should not feel that your ass is racist, duh, my father, is racist. So, it's a problem, yeah, yeah. Mr. Murphy, that individual sitting next to you, don't give a damn about you.
Alright.
After you walked out, and they didn't support your, uh, resolution, she said that you was all emotional, if you're not benefiting her, she's gonna come after you, she's gonna come after you, and for her to speak down on you like that, was highly upsetting, but let me tell y'all real quick, I need to make this known, Candace, you, you, you need to get off this campus. Viola, Viola was a consultant during water crisis, they reached out, big P.R. firm reached out to me yesterday, trying to help, have me to smear the lawyers that's representing the people in the city of Flint, because they are suing them, and they get ready to get a huge win, and they wanna be to smear them, this is the type of things that's going on right now, they calling the people in the city of Flint, so I want people in the city of Flint to know that they are playing dirty politics. So, I want people in the city of Flint to know that they are playing dirty politics. Everybody else got off. We haven't received any money yet. Prosecution, Snyder, he got off. People have died here in the city of Flint because of that water. People are still struggling because of that water. And I know you didn't like when I said, "I'm done talking about the water." Mr. Mashak, I thought highly of you. I thought that you was going to get in here and really be independent, but you have turned out to be the worst of the worst. And I want to know real quick too, Mr. Donahue, are they going on a trip paid by city council? I really want to know that because that's what's going on. Like, that's the word out here right now. Oh, you can answer. Is the city paying for you and Liddell to go on a trip? I mean, I don't like to pass rumors or tell a lie. I like to hear facts. So, when you get your two minutes, can you please address that and let us know if the city is paying for you to go to Iowa, I think New Iowa, for your Flint community water?
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I could not sit back silent anymore because I've heard so much. I've heard so many things about things that happened here in city council. Doug Matthews, your comment was repulsive. It was disgusting. Doug Matthews, your comment was disgusting. Close your mouth. Close your mouth. Anybody who stands for this, you are a snake. Liddell Lewis, you are disgusting. Dennis Whiteford called Eva Worthing the biggest piece of shit on the council. I disagree. You are the biggest piece of shit on this council. I affirm that I'm disgusted by your presence and everything associated with you. You are a devil. And anybody who stands for this devil is a devil. And that is my stance.
How y'all doing today? My name is Richard Jones. Candace and Liddell, if y'all are going on a trip, hopefully y'all going to one of those cities that are getting their citizen tax abatements. And y'all would, you know, reach out and talk to some of those city council members and see what mechanism they had to go through in order to help their residents. Quincy, I wonder why you tagging all women too and find out some kind of way to pull some grants in here that can help the residents, like on that seventy-two million dollar tax abatements that y'all just gave to our race of trucks. We really need some city council people that's going to get up here and do something for us. Now, that's something that y'all can do for us. It's bad. It's real bad. I'm thinking about you, Quincy, it's bad. And I still remember, they gave you some nails and some wood for your prep project, Jefferson School, and you done gave them everything they want. You done voted for them to favor everything that they wanted to do. They gave you some wood and some nails. Yep. You know that, Murphy. Jefferson School is surrounded by apartments. It could be filled with kids, definitely. It definitely could be open and filled with kids, but instead of doing everything necessary to get that school open, every excuse necessary to keep it deteriorate. Same for Esther, House of Esther. I don't care what your excuse was for not voting to give them that money. You should have did all the things necessary. If they had a water problem, help them fix it. Whatever problem they had, y'all should have helped, but y'all didn't. Now, I got another question to ask y'all and to bring to y'all attention, because Quincy, did y'all ask anybody in the third ward if they want those tiny homes? I want it also to be known that the Catholic charity has property in the seventh ward too. But they're not even thinking about putting them up over there. And Ms. Burns, I'm going to tell you something about these tiny homes. They got kitty litters for bathrooms. They got to be plugged in generators for their electricity. They got a messed up water system. If they don't, which means that everybody else that got them, they done changed some kind of regulations that allowed them to have running water, that got them to have a decent bathroom. Otherwise than that, they don't have. The electricity, I think they have like a boiler system.
Thank you. Any other?
Thank you very much.
I'm that, you know, I thank you, Quincy, for giving us, we wore our t-shirts for you. Critical thinking, that nobody helps you. Your colleagues don't even help you when you put a suggestion on the floor, especially the Martin Luther King for the garbage cans. Liddell said, "If we do that, the people won't get paid." If you get a legal holiday, your people get paid. A legal holiday, you get paid. Well, they don't want to do that because they won't make their money. She's dumb as a saccharose. If you keep following this dumb cracker, she's dumb as a saccharose. Critical thinking, you need to get it. You don't get it. I made this t-shirt just for you because you said, "Critical thinking," and then you say, "Boom." You need to make this stuff make sense. And I understand why Ms. Mashak put up with, what's his name, Dougie Fresh? Dougie Fresh, Dougie Stair? Your daddy got a hundred and ninety counts of rape, women, one-nine-zero. He got sentenced on three-twenty-three of twenty-three, no, six-twenty-three of twenty-three. I understand you need a daddy figure, and he's for you. Whatever you say, he's going to be there for you. I put out the recall for Quincy, you're not right. I've asked my neighbors in the neighborhood, I'm doing a recall, they say, "Do what you got to do. We're going to stand behind you." So, on my block alone, just in my household, we got six people right there. Want you to be gone. I'm sorry to say, you got to go. You got to go with dumb-dumb. You ain't so good with us. We're not going to let you sit on these seats and take our money that's for the people that did not even get a light bulb. A light bulb. But y'all take forty millions and put it in the general funds. We got turks on the house, the people coming down here telling them how their roof have caved in, there's no money when you call these different organizations that you tell them to call, there's nothing down there for us. But you guys, critical thinking, put forty mils in the general funds. I can't see why that make any sense. And I know, and you don't want to raise your hand because your daddy got a hundred and ninety...
I'm calling, this is, I'll give, Mr. Quincy, you know, a lot doesn't care who tells you.
Get in the mic, Dave.
You sat there, you walked down my street, you said that we're going to clean the street up, we're going to clean it up. But what did you do? Number one, you got four houses in a row that got trash and stuff around it, and you didn't come down here and clean it up. Now, one of them caught on fire. Okay? One was on fire. Now, but what you did do, you came next to my house, and you tore the boards off a good house. You worked, you worked for them too, so yes, you too.
Whoa!
Okay? So, that's you too. You worked for, uh, the board. It's you too. So, you know, like she said, you got another one that's going to sign that petition, okay? You need to go. All you worried about what they building that Buick over there, that's all you worrying about. So, you need to go because you don't, you don't tell the truth about that. Okay? We're leaving that alone. Now, the harbor money, can one of y'all talk to the lawyer and ask the lawyer, once you switch that money over, harbor money is gone. Can you tell the lawyer? Because people keep coming up here asking about the money. Young lady here read from her phone at the other meeting, the harbor money is for this, for that. Well, you sent the harbor money over. So, where is the money at now? There's no more harbor money. It's going in the operating funds. Now, they can do what they want to do with it. That's all council was on that phone. So, one of y'all, if you got the guts, ask the lawyer right there to see if you still have the harbor money. Thank you.
Thank you. See none in Flint County Council?
Hey, wait, no more.
Oh, sorry. I did not see.
That's so bad, Miss Daisy. I'm going to have to drag you home if you want to do that.
RL?
Yes.
My name is, my name is J.C. Doomson, I'm a resident of third ward or the second ward, I don't know. But I can sign a petition for recall in the third ward, and I will be signing a recall for petition in the third ward. I'm here to ask a question like Mr. Bushen asked about the trip. I want to know if public dollars is being used to fund a private trip? And if so, my question to the clerk, who is, who took an oath of office to uphold the constitutions of the United States, Michigan, and the charter. And you are responsible for the budget of both the Flint City Council and the clerk's office. Did you approve, or did they come to you and ask you to approve this alleged funding? I know you all will not answer me, but you can or should answer one of the council members if they pose that question. I think it's a sad day in the city of Flint, how the people and the residents of the city of Flint were being treated. I encourage you to vote no on every resolution on that agenda day that deals with arms. And let me tell you something about Salvation Army. They do great work, but the problem is that, just like Habitat for Humanity, when they get city dollars, it's not used for city residents. It's used for everybody else. And then they tell the city residents, "The money's gone." So, I appreciate Salvation Army if the money that they're receiving from the city of Flint is strictly used for the city of Flint. That's what you should ask. So, again, this is Black History Month, not week, for people who don't know Black history. It's the shortest month in the year, and so happens that Black History Month and Heritage Month is in the shortest month of the year. Ms. Burns, I stand with you as a man. I don't appreciate Mr. Doug Matthews, whatever his name is, for saying the things that he said about you and your family. And as Black men, you should apologize to this type of trifling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to call attention to Rule 27.4. Mobile devices shall be set to silent phone prayer to any meeting being called to order. I've heard mobile phones twice. So, is that, if there's no among, no other member of the public who wishes to address the council, I'll go ahead and ask for a council response. Would anyone like to address the public? Go ahead.
I want to thank everyone who came here, and I want to, and every speaker is important, but I want to say especially thank you to my family. You should have come defend me. It's not your job. It's not your job. Things have gotten so bad to it bleeds to my kids, to my Aunt Anne, and to all of you with the little family. Ms. Mashak Little is not my family. We will have to take her. We will have, as we take everybody. As we have had the councilwoman Liddell Lewis at our family functions, that she says she hasn't been there. She has been there. And I want people to know, these are not people, these are very educated people, three that got up and spoke. They go to Massachusetts, they go to Black colleges. And so, for them to come here, because my family is very close, they should have come defend themselves for nonsense that Liddell Lewis participates in.
Thank you.
That shouldn't be apparent, because in her absence, as I told you before, I would have defended her child. My daughter has been called, "Ain't monkey." You said nothing. You said nothing. You set the table, my family. You ate, you drank, you packed, had a good time, like you had cake. You had a good time. But that demon spirit inside just can't get rid of. Just, I'm talking, she's talking, Judy, can you get her under control? This should not be this way. We are here to handle our agendas and to handle the business. And if it goes to Doug, I couldn't care less what he say, because he don't even know what Black History Month is. He does not. When it comes to housekeeping, housekeeping, you should never refer to a Black woman as keeping housekeeping. We are not too far removed where our grandmother did housekeeping. And it is not something to be bragged about, but it was an honest living.
Thank you.
And it comes from slavery.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Any other councilman?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead then.
First, I would like to thank all of the speakers. Thank you for coming for and being engaged in the process. I just want to touch on a couple of points. Melissa, yes, it's appalling that not one resident here in the city of Flint, not one household, has received any harbor funding for home improvements. It is appalling. And as far as Doug Donahue's, I find it very strange for him to get up and talk about words used. When he referred to one of my colleagues, the colleague in the sixth ward, Councilwoman Burns, he referred to her as Sly Snake Bite Burns. How dare he? How dare he get up here every week and stand there to say that he's a social worker? I'm tired of this rhetoric. I'm tired of this racist undertones. I wasn't here a couple of weeks ago, I heard racial undertone made by someone, he said, This chamber has no, no, this chamber, don't come here, you're a racial undertone.
Mr. Free Capra, there was a... Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. First, I want to thank all of the speakers for coming out and speaking and for the Beverly Diggs that filed a recall on me. That's what democracy look like, so if that's what you... Um, that's what democracy look like, so if that's what you would like to do, we have a lot to do there. Also, um, for David, that, um, is now in the Third Ward. You talked about becoming in your community. Yes, I mean, I'll be back in your community. Um, we got a town hall meeting for the Rockwood neighborhood. Because my ward is so big, it's going to be hard for me. I'm doing little meetings in smaller portions, not just the big, whole entire Third Ward. So I will be back on your street. Um, no, there was not me tearing the boards down. That's not what I do. I do sit on the land bank board, but that's not my occupation. My occupation, I work for Lear Corporation, Third Ship, De Napper and the Second. That's when you'll see me working where I get a paycheck and also do city council. But I know work, I'm, it's my time to talk. Thank you very much. Um, but what I was appalled when I did come down your street is not only did I see abandoned houses tore up to the floor, I also saw residential homes tore up to the floor. So we need to make sure that we taking care of our homes when we talking about how bad the neighborhood is. Because we all got together and bringing that neighborhood up, and I look forward to working with you. But my job is working for Lear Corporation, that's what I do. See the land bank. That's what keeps me punching the clock cap. I don't work for the land bank. I sit on their board. And if you got a problem with any land bank property, you more than welcome to reach out to me. I'll do what I can to get some boards put on, but I don't, my occupation ain't taking off the boards.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for everyone that came up and spoke. Definitely appreciate all your perspectives. I know that you would like to, you would like to dim my light, but it won't happen. I know that you would like to keep trying to tell my story, but you can't because it's mine. I pray that the Lord finds you, though. I pray that He touches your mind, your heart, and your soul. I pray that He camps Himself around you. I pray that heaven finds you one day, baby. And more importantly, no, baby, because the words that come out of your mouth are nothing but evil and straight from the devil. And that's fine that you feel that way. Have fun laughing, fake writer, as I was saying. I, I know you want to dim my light, but it is not going to happen. So again, thank you for attempting to tell my story. I, I would just ask, though, that you get up here and add something meaningful to this city other than your misery. I feel bad for you. I feel horrible for you in the fact that this is how you choose to express yourself and take your time. This is the example you would like to say. There's nothing I can do for you other than be an example. May God bless you.
Thank you.
Oh, my father.
This is our time. Thank you. Go ahead, Ash.
Uh, thank you, Council, um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to, uh, address, uh, definitely a few things. And the first thing is, it's very unfortunate that I'm getting attacked by people that I consider family. I have never in this seat or on Facebook spoken anything ill or towards you all at all. You all have my number to reach out to me. I'm a very open book. Very open. You all know me for years. But, um, and when you all talk about someone, and my name is Liddell Lewis, not Linda Pelton, not no one else but Liddell Lewis, and I stand on Liddell Lewis. Okay? And so with that being said, if I say something not open, Linda Pelton, she's a grown woman wherever she is, doing whatever she does. If she mentioned her family, guess what? That's on her, not on me at all. I would never do that, just like we're sitting in these seats when your cousin mentioned, and I brought it to you, how I leave, how my son come and, and to swim at, um, at your house, jump off the diving board and stuff of that nature, how she watched my son. Your cousin has been telling people, "My marriage is a farce." Your cousin has been telling people, "I don't live in Flint." Your colleague has said all these things from her legacy. Now, one time have I said anything about you or your entire family in a negative way? Because you know what? I have nothing negative to say about you. Mr. Lewis, you have been exemplary in helping out. You helped out with the watershed cleanups. So why would I say anything negative toward you or about you? My son had his first birthday party. Ask your mom. I have never said I didn't know Mr. Lewis. Never once have I said I did not know you. What I said is, I don't speak ill.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Seeing I have the last one and the only one that's speaking and not spoken, I don't do that. I was very disappointed to see that the resolution for the breastfeeding organization was not on our agenda. It was there, it was planned to be, and it's something that I will be forward to, um, to doing. In regards to Mr., Mr. Jones, wherever you are, there you are, um, about the tiny homes. Those have to be made to code. They have to have running water. They have to have bathrooms. They have to have electricity. You're thinking about those homes that are on wheels and being moved. These are going to be permanent homes and will be to code. That's one of the requirements, and that's one of the reasons why they cost a bunch. So, um, in regards to, I, I just want to let you know that there's one point, two point one million dollars in ARB funds to be allocated tonight on tonight's agenda. Two point one.
We won fifteen.
That was, excuse me. That was outboard.
That was outboard.
Yeah, he leaving, man, he leaving.
So, that money is being allocated, it is sitting in the general fund, but it is being spent according to the plan that's passed by council. And we are ensuring that it is, every week, I provide our council members and administration with a listing of what we spent, what is left. Dr. Lewis and I meet, we go through the community grant applications, and we make sure that those are what we want before they come to council. It comes from administration, but if there's a problem with them or we feel it probably sent it back, and then we get it fixed and it comes back, which is what happened with one with the breastfeeding, um, network. So, you guys all think that this money's gone, but it's not. We are spending it according to the approved council plan. Consent agenda. I will take, I will now, um, entertain a motion to approve to send the consent agenda to council. Chair. That's part of the consent. Yes, go ahead. No. Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Is it moved and properly seconded? Is there any separation, Madam Chair?
Um, I heard, um, Mr. Murphy person now come here.
Yeah, um, I would like to separate, um, two four zero, zero two three, um, that's the, um, and I'm not sure why the council is spending it according to community development block grants, CDVG reprogramming communities first. Also, what's my? Resolution two four zero, zero zero zero, assistance with city residents for closure possibly fixed.
Very good.
Yeah, that's, that's eight four now.
Yes, he separated two four zero 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 and two four zero zero two three. Ms. Burns, do you have any other separation?
He has two four zero zero two four, two four zero zero five, two, uh, zero, zero two six. Yep, maybe go back to eight.
Yeah.
Um, two four, two four zero zero two four, two four zero zero two five, two four zero zero two six, two four zero zero two seven, two four zero zero two eight, two four zero zero two nine, two four zero zero three zero, um, two four zero zero three one. And as the three two could be, now, do you want me to correct that one or? Because that was the wrong one of this two three two, it's supposed to be.
The drain complex.
And you're mistaken, Madam Clerk.
The agenda form is wrong.
Okay, so two four zero zero three two is the police complex?
Yes.
I want that separated. Um, and two four zero zero four zero, two four zero zero four one. And that's it.
Any others? Is there another separation?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm actually just trying to give clarification about two four zero zero three two.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we, so because the resolution says that it's about the healthy babies, that you can add the healthy babies description. So.
We're, we're using the description from two four zero zero three two in the back. That's been amended. We're striking the, um, grants accepted Healthy Babies Right Futures Grant to the, um, let me find it. To the title, um, resolution to Hubble, Roth, and Clark for preliminary and conceptual design of the plant fire and police department drain complex. That's on page thirty-eight of our patent, according to the bill. Did they answer your question?
Yeah, it's just that it's not numbered like this outside of the, yeah.
It's not in the air.
I already thinking.
Is there any other, seeing none? The, um, this, the consent agenda consists of the following resolutions.
Yes, ma'am.
Two four zero zero three three, two four zero zero three four, two four zero zero three five, two four zero zero three six, two four zero zero three seven, two four zero zero three eight, two four zero zero three nine, two three zero four seven six point two.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, no comments.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You have a blessing to thank.
Here's not me. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, pardon?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Yes.
The votes five yes, zero no. Consent agenda has been moved to council. The first separation is two four zero zero two three. I would like to take a motion.
I would like to move resolution two four zero zero three to council.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. It's sent two four zero zero two three to council. Is there support?
Support.
Is the move properly seconded? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, could, um, Joe, could you come and approach the, oh, this development is a grand, um, real allocation of, um, community development block grant. And I'm not sure whether you or the administration ask, want to have a approach. I see on here that the state council is pending authority. Could you explain what you mean by that?
Yes, so we have a number of, uh, contracts with agencies who are either unable to spend their funds, their CDVG funds, um, or we, or, or, I guess, deny funds. And so now we have funds available to reallocate when we identify communities first project, to reallocate those funds towards. Yep.
So, well, I know some of my colleagues, we've been requesting for a while how much funds that community development block grant dollars that we have. So we don't know what's out there. People were complaining about not having enough money to help with home repairs. And here we are seeing some reallocation of funds going towards a project. Thank you. I wanted to, um, ask Joe.
I do want to add that we, um, we, we have to spend these funds by the thirty-first of March. Um, so it isn't, uh, we don't have a long lead time to, we have to have a project.
We got to spend the funds by the thirty-first of March.
Yes, so every year, uh, we have a timing that's gold, CDVG, we have a timing that's gold to me.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because one, um, great concern that I have now that I want you to put on your radar and to my colleagues that may not, um, be aware of this, that from my understanding, the ARB funds that we receive for ninety-four million dollars, when we award these contracts to different organizations and agencies and nonprofits or businesses or whoever we giving them for, this reimbursement dollars, so they not getting those dollars. So if we giving these organizations these ARB dollars, are y'all saying that the city of Flint didn't receive the money? And if that's the case, we want to do the same thing with the ARB dollars as with the community development block grant. So therefore, when we award contracts to ARB, I think they get up to twenty percent of the awarded contract, they might be getting upfront money.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
So my, my concern, that I just want you to put on your radar, that even if we awarded these contracts to these people that probably was in a, um, a, a COVID crisis and lost, and they ain't got no upfront money, if they get awarded a contract and they ain't got no upfront money, then that don't some money to stick there. So the money got to be spent by a certain amount of time. And we don't have, these organizations didn't have upfront money to, um, be able to draw that out from it. And that means it's the same reimbursement money that we going through now with this money that you finna reallocate or you go losing. So while we talking about we got ninety-four million dollars, it look good that we got ninety-four million dollars, but on the surface, when it come out to these organizations give you contracts, it ain't like they really get no money. They got to go still find some money and put their money upfront. So I just want you to, that's very concerning to me. Because if we don't, if they ain't spending the money and we still working on trying to allocate these dollars, if the money ain't spent by a certain time, it's going to end up being lost or we going to have to reallocate the money somewhere else because, so that's concerning. Um, not only is that concerning, you have heard people come up here at Council's times talking about money to fix homes and reallocate these dollars, and that's why I want to talk to Joe about this development. Because while I don't disagree with housing development, I disagree that Because while I don't disagree with housing development, I disagree that we ain't got enough money to help people with homes and here we are taking money to go towards new projects. So Joe, you can come and explain to me, and I'm sorry that you been playing ball with that. I've been working twelve hours or something like that, so I kind of been, um, really busy trying to play catch-up at work. Um, but back to, um, this development, could you explain? I'll come back in my next five minutes.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. Hi, Joel. Can you, um, I actually asked, purpose of that, I'll make it to you, Joel, you have a really good meeting. Um, Ashley, can you explain exactly the, the re-allocation, re-allocation of these dollars? Um, and that is just, it can be a simple form and minimalist.
Um, so as I stated earlier, there are new contracts from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three that agencies were unable to spend, um, or just deny the funds. And so now we're here at a place where we need to reallocate the funds and we can spend them to.
And how long have you known about the funds to be reallocated?
Um, I mean, there are contracts from, from.
So it's from recent?
Twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, so.
Okay.
But we do, we do regular timing this exercises and so we, I, we, you know, identify a, a contract if the agency is unable to spend and at that point we put them on our list.
And then you're told now that your re-allocation is.
Uh, one million. It should be on, on the line.
Yeah, I just wanted you to say it.
Yeah.
On the right side.
Yeah, just a little over a million, yeah. One million, uh, fifty and a million dollars fifty percent.
Okay, thank you. And then Joel, can you get up, can you, can you please tell us what these dollars should be?
Yeah.
And how important they are in reallocation?
Yeah, um, thanks so much for the question. Uh, so these dollars can go towards a development called Orchard Banner. Uh, it's located over on Flushing Road, just before you get to Banbury, right by the top part of post office there. Uh, we have a development there that, uh, has been sort of a piece of a larger couple developments rehabbing the vacant Orchard Lane Apartments, um, which are currently about half a hundred years, it became pretty dilapidated. And then building two new buildings next door. Uh, one of those buildings is technically in Flint Township, so it's not included in this request. And then, uh, this request is for a building called Orchard Banner, which would include thirty-four units of, uh, rural housing, including ten units set aside for, uh, formerly homeless veterans, including direct vouchers to connect them with social services to the Veterans Administration. And one reason why this is so important, um, really is as we proceeded through this project, you know, we're always going through reviews with the state. They requested some additional things like soil removal and then should have, that site cleanup was even more detailed um, than our original proposal and we're always happy to do that. It comes with added costs. Um, so this really is last money in on this project. Um, like I actually stated, the city has to spend it down by the end of March. And we're confident with this project, with our contractors, that we can do that. And, um, both, you know, the city can meet a timing this deadline and also deliver three to four units of new housing.
Okay, so in this program, and it is in the sixth ward, Orchard Banner had become very dilapidated. Um, and so there was a crucial, this has actually been in process for about four years now?
Yeah, I think the first night we, we bought pure house on somewhere like twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I, I remember, um, those late nights and some didn't agree with it. But it is actually, so now there's cabinets, new windows, um, there's just a bunch of, the facade have been changed. And then you actually added onto it two different buildings, which one of is that weird little junction metal where Flint Township and Flint meets, which is, where the medical arts building used to be, which half of the medical arts building was Flint Township and the other half was Flint. And so it was just odd. And so this actually adds, um, housing. Uh, it will house at least ten roster for the Veterans Association. So that we're making sure we're taking care of those who have served our country. And new housing for them, not just that adds on to that, um, to that apartmental housing, or they're townhouses.
It's a big some apartments, some townhouses all throughout.
And so I, I have watched this project, the project's been very slow before they come to fruition. So we can actually see some things and it will be groundbreaking, hopefully this spring, um, we'll be consistent or consistent progress on this, uh, with Community First and our meetings have been very great. Guys have been a good community partner and I heart appreciate the work that we do and have done. And the sixth ward has had quite a bit of projects, um, in award, in, in my ward. And this one I do support and I support is for veterans. We got to start making sure we're looking out for veterans. The veteran housing, you know, we often see some of them where they go through, they, they may live on the street, they are homeless some of them. And this helps to provide, uh, affordable housing, say as new housing, new housing. So thank you for coming, um, and I appreciate it. I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Ms. Luther Gerber?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Joel, the one thing I do appreciate about Community First, well, you, you guys know that we, we have a housing crisis of, from the United States, not only here in Michigan, but you guys, you take care of the veterans, you know? And a lot of your buildings, I know, and I just wanted to find out from you, how many of your buildings do have, um, available or have apartments or homes for veterans? Because you guys really look out for veterans.
Yeah, we, we certainly have veterans who are tenants in a lot of our, what are called permanent supportive housing. Um, so none of them that I know of are related to this is called VA supportive housing, which is like another step of veteran support. Um, but you know, off the top, I mean, I can think of several tenants that we have that are in what is called permanent supportive housing for formerly homeless folks that are veterans who have smocked the street. Whether that's at Swayze or at Berkeley or at Coolidge, so it's quite a few properties.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the, um, good things about Community First. Um, but I, I do wish you guys would look into, um, more housing for our seniors. We get a lot of, um, calls, um, for, for seniors, um, with housing needs. So that's something to look forward, but I do support this project. This project has been, um, in the works for a very long time. I think was it two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, go back and back about that.
Yeah, you guys came and we, um, discussed Orchard Place. So I support the project and thank you for all of the work that you guys do.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round? And then the second, Ms. Murphy?
Yes, um, I, I guess I was kind of confused when my colleague, um, councilwoman Brown talked about that, um, you buy your vine and the best township. What, what is this location at, um? I know it's on Flushing Road, but is it on the other side of Banbury or?
Um, I have a question.
It's actually, but, uh, it's on any side.
Yeah.
Ms. Murphy?
Uh, I can answer that.
Madam Chair. To, to the speaker, um, I'm not sure if you know, but it is literally like right after, so you know how you have the tax place, you have something else, you have sliders? All that stuff going over is considered Flushing Township. So none of that is like that. No, excuse me, Flint Township, yeah. So none of that going over.
It is not going over.
Um, I didn't call it going over.
I have never questioned information.
The point of information.
She didn't have the floor.
Ms. Burns, please, let me handle it.
Then handle it.
Request for information is to get information from the mayor instead of giving information. But this, Mr. Murphy should have asked for clarification on that through, to somebody on the council. So go ahead, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Murphy, go ahead.
Um, so, well, you guys, you guys will be building a new building in a just in the rehab that you guys are already doing. What's the projected date for you guys to try to finish that renovation? Because it look like you guys been working on this for a while. Is it stalled or something?
No, I mean, that one has been, um, so in particular in that project, we tried to create more opportunities, especially for low, lack-owned contracting firms as well. So we broken up some of the work with smaller jobs. Um, so that's made some of that project, so we give smaller, uh, you know, entrepreneurs a chance to work on that stuff, take a little bit longer. So we're doing, there's four buildings in that. One of them, I know we're expecting to be like ready for inspection and move in by April of this year. And then we'll kind of keep going through the next three buildings in there, uh, probably over the next year. Uh, but doing them kind of one building at a time throughout the year.
So, um, and I went to one of you guys' groundwork and I really want, um, bring that back up though. But I was just talking about the storage space and, um, the apartments that you guys, uh, and, uh, you know, that is nice design concept inside, but what I am really concerned of is the closet space. There wasn't a lot of closet space in some of the apartments that you guys, uh, um, developed. So moving forward in your future development, hopefully when y'all are developing, y'all are developing all of these apartments and then next thing you know, people got to, um, squeeze it to these little small, well, this compacted closet space. Because when I looked at it, I was like, if I had to move an apartment, um, it really ain't that much. I could, I could get about ten outfits in there. And that's not good, in my opinion, to be building a whole bunch of properties on top of each other and then I'm already concerned about a whole bunch of apartments and not homeownership.
Well, I think that's a fair point some weekend to make sure.
That is a big concern and then it's almost like it's a trend to build a whole bunch of apartments. Leave out owner occupied rehab and homeownership and what are we going to own outside of the clothes and the furniture? I'm not into us just owning, um, clothes and furniture. I want us to own the property, the home, stuff like that. That's what I'm really into. And I'm not against affordable, word spill of these houses because we lack the word that we use all the time. Um, we don't have enough housing, but yet still, we ain't invested in stabilizing, um, the owner occupied homes. And here we are putting millions of dollars into ren- renovating or, um, apartments. But yet still, you got a whole bunch of people, mean nothing, mean nothing, keep coming out of city council talking about maybe owner occupied rehab and they can't find no money. Habitat, they got none, G car, they got none. Somebody put an application in, they still ain't heard none, they still ain't heard none. Y'all ain't heard none from nobody that got one group put on. That is really concerning. So while we put money into this, we got some bigger fish to fry when it come down to, um, helping these people with their homes and they not wrong. And I feel bad that here we are finna turn around and give you guys a million dollars for something ain't nobody gonna never own. They go rent, my mother used to tell me, po-po's can't afford to rent. If I'm poor and I gotta pay seven or eight or nine or ten hu- a thousand dollars a month, I ain't gonna never get up out of property because every time I go to work, I gotta go to work to pay rent for something I never owned. And, and that's just, I, I, my philosophy, uh, what I look like, what owner occupied and, uh, and a sense of belonging look like, ain't renting no house for the rest of my life. So what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm, I'm really not for renting and promoting rental houses because we short homes because we don't have no houses or house shorts. I'm into people owning something so they can give something to their kids and grandkids when they die off, their kids will have something besides.
And the other person in the second row. So I have Ms. Burns.
So I, I absolutely agree with homeownership and I think that it's very important that you can have something to, to pass down. Orchard Banner's already there though. And so it's, it's situated right in the pocket of a residential area. So either we can repair and continue to make, um, this property, it's where it can be lived again and holds its historical value. Or we can have a dilapidated building like we have eight on nine south Banbury that has been vacant and needs to be torn down. What's not being torn down is now it's falling down. And it's been a, it's an eyesore and it's a dump. So I think everyone would agree that I wish we had used our funds or did something for, um, for homeownership or did something uniquely different because we had ninety little point seven million in our funds and the balance of forty million went over to the general fund. But these homes are these, it is temporary. You can save, you know, you know, generally, I mean, my first, I have a house at first, I had an apartment. And we saved to get that house. And then we sold our house, went from apartment to a house and then first house we sold made a profit. We took that profit, went and bought a bigger house. And then, you know, that's what you, you know, that's what, what you do. But, um, and then some people don't want to live in homes. Some people don't want responsibility of breaking leaves, mowing grass and shovel itself. They want to call the maintenance maintenance. I know, days I want to. So I think this is a good, a good project. Uh, I can agree with homeownership, it's like the hundred ninety homes that Council Murphy wanted to, uh, help with some assistance with the legal, um, eastern legal services to help preserve people in their homes. And so with this project, I, I do support, um, Community First does a good job in changing management um, of your current property. But I've never had a problem getting in contact, weekends, holidays, working forever, whenever because you're very responsive. And it's a need for the community and I appreciate having you as a good community partner and that you're reachable. But also doing homeownership, that homeownership is not your problem. That's about, that was natural. We, I wish we could have done something great with our, our, our funds for homeownership and put on more roots with our art funds, but, um, but that, we just weren't able to do that. And these agencies don't have funds or we don't know what are going to give funds for homeowners here. Those are two separate things. This is a good project. Community First takes a very, uh, endeavor, their projects are very detailed. And I appreciate the professionalism that you have and also the level of the sculpting work that they do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the second round? I'll take some, uh, just a couple of minutes. Joel, this is not the first time I've said this to you. Do you know what I'm going to say?
Uh, what is the project in the fourth ward?
Yeah! And I tell that to everybody. The fourth ward is going to have a lot of property. I support this project. I supported every project you've done, um, but it's the fourth ward's time. The amount of ARPA dollars coming into the fourth ward and I read, I, um, Dr. Lewis and I met with the Illustration and Metro this morning. And their housing, their, their selection of their first round of homeowners that will get home repair, there's maybe six in the fourth ward.
So where is that?
So. We needed two and I just want to call that to people's attention that, um, we will have lots of property. We have lots of property. Thank you. This is the vote to send resolution two four zero zero two three to council. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Freycliff?
Yes.
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 Ms. Shad?
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is yes, zero, no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. I guess we'll see you Monday. Thank you. The next resolution is two four zero zero two four. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy. Motion two four zero zero two four to council.
Motion on the floor said two four zero zero two four to councils, their support.
Support.
Is the motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Mr. Moore, so you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, I know that he cannot have, I'm looking at these, these items and they still have, I'm just going through my, my packet.
The next resolution and the resolution. We're still putting ARBA, um, um... And so you're, can you, I believe, you've saved a couple different things. Has the, this money is... We don't have an ARBA cap, it's general fund now, correct?
That, uh, that, we do have money that we haven't spent it up yet, that are previously approved, it's still in our.
So is it still sitting in the, in ARBA?
That's correct.
It hasn't, so we didn't move the entire balance of money to general fund?
Everything that had been approved prior to the December meeting is still in the ARBA.
And so this was one of them?
This is, uh, this is not one of them, this is one that you had addressed before.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's it?
Thank you.
I'm reading this room.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? See none, second round, Ms. Murphy, you're the oldest, okay. Okay, this is the vote, send two four zero zero two four to Council. Madam Clerk. Yes.
This one be heard?
Yes.
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 The vote is six yes, zero no, two four zero zero two four will be going to Council.
The next resolution is two four zero zero two five, I will entertain a motion, send to Council.
Madam Chair, what is that? Um, I would like to, um, make a motion to send two four zero zero two five to Council, reallocation of ARBA funds, neighborhood engagement hub impacts of the pandemic on the part and this is for, um, Carriage Town Neighborhood Association.
Okay, there's a motion on board, send two four zero zero two five to Council, is there support?
Support.
Multiple supports, I will take Mr. Murphy. Next time Ms. Murphy, is there any discussion? Any discussion? See none, oh, yeah, I'm still, yeah, and this one is...
Would that be Ash, what's your point?
Uh, I, I, these are the same ones that we got put in our box.
I would have the pendulum. You'll be, I, I, this is, oh.
That's not the one.
Uh, Ash, this would be your project?
It's, um, it's... It's the community grant, you're, you're up, Shelly.
Here, I got the right ones, this is number twenty-five. Two four, I'm just not born on, I'm sorry, two, I was hoping you would know better, we'll be going over together.
Is it two four zero zero two five?
Yep. So...
Carriage Town.
I missed a question, I couldn't hear you.
So this was the one requesting for, like, this is the one I really care about. Okay, I need, okay, I remember here, you've been here a couple times.
Yeah.
Okay. I remember.
All right.
The separated, Shelly, wait, wait, these are the, I'm sorry, man.
That's okay.
These are the separated ones, right?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? That was the first round, we'll go to second round, see no movement, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
This one be heard, again?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
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 Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is suggest, zero no, that will be sent to Council. The next separation is two four zero zero two six, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to send, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to send, um, resolution number two four zero zero two six to Council.
Okay, there's motion on board, send two four zero zero two six to Council, is there support? Support. Then move to Department of Secu, send them to Council, is there any discussion?
No.
Madam Chair, go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Um, Shelly, with this, you, Madam Chair, would you be able to tell what this project is, Kennedy Center, Shalay's?
That's real, that's real, Pastor Reed. This Pastor Reed.
Shelly, go, Madam Chair.
This, this Pastor Reed, the one that fired, uh, yeah, because, uh, uh, Millie's promised him some money. I hope they wrote it down.
All right.
So the purpose of this one is to become an economic development and entrepreneur hub for the city. The hub will include Shalay's, uh, where youth and adults could sell their products. Um, it will also include a food truck area and a pavilion for entertainment and entrepreneurship in the food industry to expand business reach as well as walking tracks, kids park and to create a healthy family environment, uh, with life-size chess sports.
This not it.
To teach strategy, is that the word?
This, this not the Kennedy, the Kennedy.
Oh, I'm on two six, sorry. No, we are on two six.
Oh, they didn't change it. It was a fat cleaners at first.
Community. Okay, that's for sure.
They didn't change what they was doing.
Yeah, that's what it's for. Um, James, the J T Kennedy family, they existed for like forty years, um, they didn't, they go Pierce and Breville or the Court or the North Flats, they do a lot of programs and things like that to kind of like educate, create entrepreneur opportunities for the community, um, so they do reading with, uh, pastor from kids third grade, they have a safe place for kids, open exam, recreational, they also do programs for kids age of sixteen to twenty-four, uh, and they just do a lot, I mean, the pastor when they're really gets involved in programming for the ci- for the, uh, city, so I think that this will be a little for that.
So this is gonna be like a, um, something for the kids?
Yep.
And see, this is my concerns, cause we do not have the person for councilman, we, this is in this board.
Yep.
And he's not here. And I know he has spoken, the Pastor Reed is here, he has spoken to, um, to Pastor Reed, generally, what the consensus is, uh, and it is presence for council is, what does the councilperson of that board during the one that council respects, you know, what that councilperson wants? We don't have the councilperson, he's not, he's out to march and we don't have Pastor Reed here, I, I know he hasn't been here since, I'm gonna say that night.
Yeah, he came the last week.
Yeah. He wasn't here last week.
No, the, what they're, uh...
Yeah, Dennis Barnett, yeah, I know Dennis.
Yeah.
Dennis ain't passed.
No.
Yeah. So I know, I've known Dennis for a very long time and so this one, I, I mean, we would, I would like to, uh, talk to Pastor Reed, because this is important, we're asking the city for money, I think it's important for the organizations that we had those to come up, I mean, to show that they're putting forth that effort also and he's not here, not even the councilperson in the first ward, you know, and so this is a first ward project and we can't ask Pastor Reed any question. I know you say he's involved, but he's not here and he, he, he should be here. I mean, when we're giving out these monies, cause we could take these monies and give any other neighborhood and program that could be very well be used.
Look, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna...
I mean, and that's just, I don't, I, I have a problem with this at this point, I, this would may have gone back to...
Other projects, they'll just...
Because I, I don't, I would like to see Pastor Reed here, cause I've been asked questions, um, for, for him and this project and then the Councilman Mayes is, is, is not here, you know, so his ward has been without representation and will be without representation for ninety days and that, that is a problem. We've always dreamed of that the councilperson can speak on behalf and I know he had conversations with Pastor Reed, yeah, and he was not, you know, Pastor Reed, they were very, um, cordial to each other, so, um... Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Five Screen, did the scope of this money change? Because I'm reading this, the resolution, um, in our packet and it refers to blight, but the project that they're doing, the Kennedy Center, um, Charlotte's Village, it's not, it's not, um, that's not blight, what they wanna do with the twenty-five thousand, at first it was fifty thousand, right?
Yeah, but we were asking lower, because it was the original tax was twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, but, but what they want to do with the money has nothing to do with blight.
Well, they're repurposing a vacant land that they purchased, so I'm not sure what's all on there, but I know around that area, they do have a lot of, you know, people dumping and stuff around that area, so I'm not sure what's considered blight around there, but they do, that vacant land does have a lot of...
So what they're doing is putting this village on that land. I would say that this was going to need to be redone because in my mind, blight is, you clean it up, it's blight, blight is not, uh, empty lot that's cleaned off already. Do you understand?
I understand, but this is blight, they purchased it, I don't, I'm not, I'm not...
Did they, did they apply for, for this particular project?
Yes, this is a, this is what we have received.
When was this approved?
It was a lunch.
Um, because when they first came before us for the fifty thousand, it was for blight, they were gonna do cleanups around the area. Now they're, now we are getting...
I see they had two, two different projects that they were gonna do, so this is, I believe, the second.
Okay, so did you guys get it mixed up when you put it under the category of blight? It's under what?
It's under vacant lots.
Vacant lots, under blight?
Yes.
Yes, it's under blight.
Okay, okay.
I think they re-categorized them a few since you were like made it under two...
Okay, so, so under blight, you had different categories?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Exactly, they were, they were called it all, you know, there's blight.
Yeah, but... I'm, I'm, the, they're doing some, uh, village here, food truck and, um, walking track and kids park and... I can't see where this is under the category of, of blight. I mean, vacant lots, I mean...
Well, they, the, because of the money move, they, when they re-categorize and they renumbered everything, they, they didn't number them the same way that they did in the first, you know, how they had neighborhoods clean up, separate and all that, so they now have like public health, so that would be mental health and, oh, you know, anything where you tell them anything comes under that.
Shelly.
You're confusing things.
Why am I confusing?
Never seen, she's sleeping, it's my time.
So now the categories are kind of combined, right? So under blight, now you might have neighborhood cleanup, I'm not sure where all those are there, but that's what happened. So blight is not the same as it used to be and it was separated, so under blight now comes a different category.
And they applied for two separate grants and they both were approved.
Yes. Well, you know, in the beginning, when we started talking about this, the first ward, they didn't have anything that was counted approved, so when we took a look at it, we like, well, who did hit the hardest, you know?
And I know, I know that Councilman Mayes did, did speak about this, he did want to give them something for whatever it was that they wanted to do. Okay. Um, I just, I don't know, I just have, I don't know. This is what, this was not the original, um, scope, I mean, this is not the one that they came to us beforehand, because that was blight cleanups, that was last, that was moved to. That was not really approved or something.
No. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. Um, so what my understanding is, and what my colleague is trying to say, um, even though this is a vacant lot repurposing and I, I remember me talking about the same, um, thing that you talked about at, um, a park over there in my, my, um, was it my park that did a trail and it was up under the blight category and I was like, uh, a trail named blight, so a lot of times it seemed like some of these projects just don't fit that category and this is another similar project, but, uh, this twenty-five thousand is separate that the fifty thousand, I was thinking we already approved them for fifty thousand. So this would be their first twenty-five thousand to...
It may get approved, yes.
All right, I'm hungry, all right, thanks.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. Um, I, I find it very troubling that when it comes down to voting for things in Carriage Town, things in other wards, people don't have any problem, but now when it's time to vote for other projects and other wards, it's a big problem.
It's the individual.
They've been waiting, the Kennedy Center, they've been waiting to receive these funds so they can do great thing in the first ward for, mm, since sometime last year. And this right here is a total separate resolution, cause that resolution, um, it, it got voted down by Councilwoman Burns and, um, Councilwoman Pike, so, I mean, it, it makes me a little uneasy, you know, the fact that we're here and we're acting like we're, first, we're concerned about what they're doing with the money. They laid it out very succinctly, well, let me start here. But, but I...
What's your point?
Can you correct her on speaking to the motives, because she's staying ignorant information with other projects, cause I voted for Pierce Park, I voted for the project on that park, she needs to have information correct.
That's improper, go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Wow.
So the blight category, we said that we wanted to tackle things by category to make things easier for the council, so we can move, so we can do blight and we can move on to the other quote-unquote buckets, that's what we're trying to do, so we can make sure that those that received the money, um, they, they receive it, they receive notification, those that do not, they receive notification that they did not receive any ARBA funding, um, from this funding. And so vacant lots fall under blight, we want to be clear as far as that goes. The Kennedy Center, they applied for money under blight, fifty thousand dollars to clean up some vacant lots and not just that, they applied for money to, um, to, excuse me, not clean lots, as also do snow removal and grass removal for seniors. Unfortunately, what, I was held up from a meeting, cause I was coming, I was... Unfortunately, what, I was held up from a meeting, cause I was coming, I was going to Odenham, and I saw the ambulance had trouble getting to a resident in the first ward. The ambulance was literally shoveling a pathway so they can take out the gurney and so the person can receive medical attention. See, the longer we keep kicking the can down the road and playing these personal politics, real people are being hindered. They're not getting the services that they need. So time is other essence, so that person, we, we wish that the Kennedy Center cleaners would have been in full effect to help that Odenham person get shoved out, but they were not. That could have been the difference between their life or not. But we're sitting in our seats playing games with people and then their projects and their ward. This right here is a separate ward, a separate thing for vacant lots. It's talking about what they want to do with the vacant lot. They applied for the money, we have it to give, why are we holding up good work? When it comes down to good work in the rest of the wards, I am not holding back anything because I have a right with any councilperson. That's not what we're here for. We're not here to politicize our seats and hold back money, that's not why we're here. But it looks like that's what happened, it sounded like people are, I guess, all of a sudden confused at what's going on. It is very apparent. The Kennedy Center, they applied for fifty thousand dollar white grant to clean and to help people with their grass and snow. Then they applied for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to help, to help out repurpose a vacant lot. We have the money they applied for, why are we holding it up? If it was in the fifth ward, I'll vote for it. Sixth ward, I'll vote for it first, any other ward, I'll vote for it. But I feel this is very unfair.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Um, yeah, request for information.
A point of order.
What is your, yeah, what?
She had a point of information.
It, it, it's fine. So we have all the members yelling out Miss B on this side, yelling out. Oh, that's why I did it, so councilperson can bring a point of order. So therefore, yeah, so I'm bringing her to order.
Request for information. Councilwoman Lewis, who said that I wasn't gonna vote for it, or any of us wasn't gonna vote for this resolution? What is your record?
That's improper.
Wow.
No, it's not, it's a question, why aren't we going off? We didn't say we weren't gonna vote for it.
We have a whole track record.
Can she's not speaking to the motives of councilpeople voting, rocking to the forty-three point two and like, she should know that, since she like rules.
Thank you. It, it's not called speaking to motives, it's called speaking to facts. So, last, so last meeting, Councilwoman Burns and Councilwoman Piper voted no for the Kennedy Center project. That's not speaking to motives, speaking to what had happened. So hopefully, thank you, Ms. Monica Hunter, I, I trust that we can get your vote so we can help move the first ward forth in behalf of the Councilman Mays, thank you.
Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round, second round?
No, I don't care. Let me just say this, as long as I sit here in this seat, I'm gonna ask questions. Now, by me asking questions, it doesn't mean that I'm not gonna vote for it. I'm gonna continue to ask questions. That's why I sit here. If you're taking my questions the wrong way, so be it. So be it. I'm gonna sit here, I'm gonna vote the way that I feel that the fifth ward would want me to vote. If I wanna vote yes, if I wanna vote no, or if I want to abstain, that's what I'm gonna do. Now, all of that, that Councilwoman Lewis just, just said, I'm sitting here confused. Who said, who said we weren't gonna, at least, who said I'm also gonna vote for this? This project? I can ask questions, I'm gonna continue to ask questions. Because I wanna get the information for myself. So that, so that I can make an informed decision. And there's nothing wrong with it. Thank you, um, Ms. Sparks Green.
Any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair, go ahead, Miss Murphy. I don't, I don't appreciate Councilwoman speaking to what my motives would be, um, and how I vote, I vote according to how I vote. And then her, yeah, saying, yeah, another lie. She's good at that, she's too right. I voted for Pierce Park, understood that I voted for, actually, I can and explain why I voted for painting, um, of the homes in the cultural, not my, several ward, cause I understood that. So my voting is my voting, it's not a business how I vote and if my questions that I'm asking. So she says this rhetoric, she tries to, to get people to go together with this. I'm just gonna put it on the line, I wanted to know, I have a right to ask questions. I wish I had been in my seat, but they put up for the Dr. King, but I had to go to the restroom for part two, so I would have voted for that. But I had to go to the bathroom, cause I would have voted yes for that. So when it comes to this, yes, we have a right to ask questions. I don't care about the, the politics, but it's a project, but she does. She does, and she's stating this, we're not, I'm suspect. I'm suspect, you know, and, and, and that's troubling to me, and I, and this is the first time we're seeing this in a chalet. You know, and, and we're looking at this. I don't talk to, to the seventh ward, I don't agree with her, but her projects, I will communicate with her in detail, because it's about the project that needs to be done. And that's the way it's supposed to be, because I voted no, I have the right to vote no on anything I choose, because shit, look at this seat. And so when it gets to this, let's get down to it, did you promise Pastor Reed something that you couldn't, you know, receive? Because we should know, you won Beverly Biggs, kicked out, cause you went over there and then had her, called her out in the order. You know, you stopped this lady from making money, but Pastor Reed kicked her out of the Kennedy Center. You can't be right, cause of you.
Is that why she didn't vote for them, their council?
That's improper.
Girl, you need to stop, you need to warn her, cause I'm not putting up with her food, she's just here today, and she got a proper postal stamps and food stamps. She come here, she got some mess to say, we might suck, we just need to get her back. I'm gonna, what's a chalet? Well, chalet is generally a, my idea of a chalet, it definitely, it's like a cottage, you know, you'll be in a chalet. Not a chessboard, it's, it's not the same thing. So I'm looking at wording, because I can comprehend what I read, so I'm gonna ask a question. I think of a chalet as a Swiss house. A lot of, of, I don't even understa, I don't even understand what this is. Sometimes it's my instinct, so I'm sending you to go back to the city. A chalet is, I don't understand it, and they came back and they asked for money. This should be clear to us, this isn't clear. Yeah, I mean, I wanna be in a chalet somewhere. So when we talk, look at this, and it's becoming not clear. We can ask questions, we're supposed to. I'm not a rubber stammerer. I'mma ask questions. I'mma read it, if I don't understand it, then I'mma ask other people, that's what I'm doing. This don't look like a chalet to me. I mean, I'm just saying. And so when we look at these things, and because we do not have an absence of a person, and he does want things in his, in his ward. He had talked to, and he had good communication. So it's not that, this don't look like no chalet. So I'mma ask questions. And in, in that grant you gave, if I, you would just get turned somebody completely off, cause you're trying to demonize people. You, you gaslight. And, cause she voted no on the last one. Okay, well, that's my prerogative. I don't vote yes on everything, why, cause I am not a rubber stammerer. I read, if I understand, and Pastor Reed should be here today. Salvation Army was here and their project wasn't even on the thing, um, two meetings ago and they sat here. He want that money, he should be here. He not here, he got you speaking for, you taking that money. I, I talk, and we pay attention. You, you should have spoke for him, this is not a chalet.
Any other discussion in the second round?
Yes, Madam, yes, Madam.
Madam, um, Madam Chair. Thank you. He can call it whatever he wants to call it. It's, it's a project, it's his ARPA funding. And so, the sad part is, we just heard several different things in her rant. Uh, for, for us to information. Is this Pastor Reed's ARPA funding, is that what I heard you say? Cause this belongs to the residents of Funtz ARPA Fund Run.
That's right.
She's a clown.
That, that was a problem. Here's the deal, at first, she says that, you know, I, I don't use my seat, I vote for what I, what I think is right. And then she wanna, you know, and accuses me of putting someone out of his facility, because I told him to. All of that is untrue. All of it's untrue, and unfortunately, whatever she speaks is, is always an element of untruth to it.
Request information. What's your request was Pastor Reed asked to come here, did you know? Cause he should be here, since you said it's his ARPA money.
Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
Not a problem.
We can answer that, you know.
Problem. I don't know. So, anyhow, the point is, we can play games. People are utilizing their, and plus, they said, uh, I wanna send it back. Everything that we need to make a decision is right here in front of us. Everything we need to make a decision is right here in front of us. The vacant lot, write-up, um, Ms. Sparks Green, she sent things via, what does that go? Excel, we have everything that we need to make a decision about what we're for us tonight. And so, I'm not telling you how to vote. And then I hope that people do represent their ward, not just the ward, entire city. Because if we must allocate this money for the city and not just our ward, I hope that individuals will keep in mind the entire city when they're voting. Now, once have I said anything, let me just retract the fact. Not once have I politicized this city to attack a citizen ward. I have not, and I will now. But nor do I talk about people's marriages, people's addresses, and then try to bring someone else here.
Stop being dramatic.
Very dark, very horrible, I don't care about a meter. I mean, you, you talking about.
I don't care about you, it's your marriage, it's nothing else.
Ladies.
It's not.
What's up?
Ladies. This is supposed to be professional.
It, it definitely is.
And that means we have a call-out, family, we have a call-out. We talk about the resolution that has been forced. This resolution is about alternative uses for vacant lots for J.C. Kennedy Center. Please stay on that topic, thank you.
It's not a problem, you're definitely welcome. But the point is, we cannot use our seats and weaponize them against people or organizations that we do not like. We cannot do that. It does not make sense and it's not fair to the residents. It's not fair to the residents of the ward, nor is it fair to the organization that applies. So I'm calling the question, you know, if I don't get selected, I'm calling the question, what was the motive behind it? Because right here, it hasn't said on record.
Request information.
What's your request?
Just the, the speaker understand, oh, this is not a chalet.
And, and so again, that was her third, and my third request information on my time, let me finish. Regardless of what he calls it, he'll fly. And then she also mentioned that I'm messing with Pastor Reed's money. So, so that's saying, because I'm, I'm, I'm forward, I'm speaking on it, that's wanting her vote, these are things being said from her seat.
Request for information. What's your request, I did not say Pastor Reed, I said with Miss Beverly Biggs, cause she was removed from the Kennedy Center after he went there and spoke.
That is not what she said, I'm messing with Pastor Reed's money, I'm speaking on behalf of Kennedy Center.
Talk about this resolution.
This is a hundred percent about the resolution. Because if we're gonna hold people, if we're gonna hold people money hostage, because of our personal feeling, it's not fair. And I'm wasting my time being here. If we wanna do that. Um, did you hear the bye come from the audience?
From who?
Not a problem. This is a hundred percent true, because if we're gonna vote off a personal feeling and hold this money hostage to people that apply and that qualify for the money, I'm wasting my time simply having conversations. It's a waste of time. So, as councilpeople, I urge every single one of us, get out of your feeling and let's get into what's factual, and let's do what's best for the residents. He can call it a chalet, he can call it a shindig, whatever he calls it, does duty have, is, is his resolution in order.
Request for information.
What's your request?
If a chalet has to be in order, Mr. Speaker, it has to be in order. We cannot just say it's a chalet, which is actually a very nice place that you can house in, and then say whatever he wants to call it. That's not how we do business, we don't do shady business.
That's improper.
And it's been running for the fourth time. So, but the point is, he can call it whatever he wants to call it. It's however, I, I don't know what funding he have aside to help out, I don't know. But what I do know is, we're, we're being pet, you know, we don't like the name, we don't like the name of. So now, we don't wanna vote for more and more information. This, this is horrible. And the whole city is watching, I mean, we can laugh, but I don't think the first ward residents will appreciate the fact that we're neck-kicking. We're neck-kicking. And this is paying, paying taxes, this is, this is.
Ladies.
I know, it's crazy, the statement, you're such a liar.
You're not getting more, you're not getting more. Who's that, Miss Burns, you had your first warning.
I don't feel the ruling of the chair, you can thought I was wrong, but I'm not going to allow her to talk crazy to me.
I, I hate the Miss.
Did she do it?
Yes, she did.
I feel the ruling of the chair. I'm not accepting, this is not a chalet, let this man be honest with us anyway he want to, where we do that at? I'm not a liar, it's a chalet.
To the ruling of the chair, there's the part, yes, I'm the board, there's the option. All right, ladies, um.
She's stuck, she on the chalet.
This is, this is what we get into. We have people who don't have rugs, we have one shingle on a rug, not one fur. And she is allowing us to say, I don't care what this man, Pastor Reed of Kennedy Center, what he calls it, he calls it shindig. Well, you can't do that. A chalet is a very nice place where you can go stay. You know, you know, in the Swiss Alps or, you know, the countryside, it's a fancy name for a, a upper scale of bougie cottage. We cannot, we don't have that, that's gonna be on the corner, Pearson and Fleming. Chalet on Pearson and Fleming. So if the paperwork is not in order, then we should not, we should send it back to fixing. But don't try selling us a building, it don't work with me. It don't work with me, this is not a chalet. And then to say, just put it through and let it go, let this man put whatever he want, no. Because those ARPA guidelines, I said it's the how it should be said. There's ARPA guideline, but because the ARPA guideline is off, she said that the non-chalet on corner Pearson and, um, what, Fleming, let it go, it don't matter. Don't matter to you, it doesn't matter what it says on the paperwork. It doesn't matter what it says on the resolution, just let it go. We all need to line up and just call whatever you want, and just, guess what? We just gonna let it go. Just give money, because you know a policy procedure doesn't matter, obviously, come from the president of Flint County Council. That's shindig, chalet, whatever, it don't matter. It doesn't matter to her, has nothing to do with, I don't care for candidates, at all. But what I did do is appreciate what she was standing up for the seventh ward. When she said, I want to make sure that the homes get painted, and that was her fifth vote, she probably got a one gun photo on it. But we did have diet, my, but it's for the community, not just the paint. It was also dealing with the, she was down to a damn line again about the creeps, that they needed those money. I'm always getting along with Councilwoman Murphy, but he can express himself to me, and it's wonderful to do it. But I'm not gonna give somebody his ARPA fund, which are not his ARPA funds. The Department of Treasury did not deposit them to the Kennedy Center. They deposited them to the conference of the city of Flint. And we are to be very careful with how we spend these monies. And not into chalet. That's gonna not be on the corner of Pearson and Fleming Road. So, yeah, words matter. Words absolutely matter. And I'm not just gonna say, hey, whatever he want to call it, get this man his money.
And I'm not just gonna say, hey, whatever he want to call it, get this man his money. And I don't line up like that. He want twenty-five thousand dollars, we don't make that a year, on City Council, for his chalet. So, no, I mean, words matter. And to sit up and try and say to bully, you can bully me.
The chalet.
That's a fine, that's a word. You have to be specific enough, and he's, we're emotional, we're tremendous, she wants to put something else in, word, chalet.
占用你的时间.
I'm going to give me a chalet.
Is there any other discussion?
But do you?
Any other discussions?
Um, sure. We can need to stay on topic. And if we stay on topic, we'll be fine. We stay on topic and focus on what we need to focus on, and stop defiling our seats against organizations that we may have a chance to win. That's what we need to do. That's what we need to do. And for an idea feeling, this morning that she's about to get. I'm finding my voice, because guess what? When you out of order, you get your order, and you keep on pushing, you don't fight when you out of order. I was out of order. You keep it moving. So, we wasting time with this appeal. But again, as we, as we talk about someone's chalet, 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 guess what? He put forth a resolution. He called the chalet, people by name and child chalet, chalet it is to him. If, in his vision, if he's putting a chalet on, uh, on the corner, or wherever he's had it a lot for, then that's what he's going to do. So, there's no need for us to word pick, or try to wordsmith his project. If you were so involved in it, you would have helped him write the grant. But individuals did not, so I will not say back.
Oh, I'm sorry. We talked.
But, but they're lying.
Folks talk.
Yes. If I can hear you, I hear you too.
But what I want them, I want to sit up here and let people make fun of people's projects. That's tasteless and classless. So, regardless it is a chalet, that's what he called it, that's what he said it is. If you don't like the name of it, move on. But to sit up here and try to make fun and hold a picture up, that's not cool. That's not cool on behalf of the Kennedy Center, the first board of the residents of the city of Flint. And that's a reminder how people are bullied by councilpeople. You don't do that. So, as we sit here and act like we, you don't deserve more, let's go ahead, stick to this. Let's be unbiased and not partial, so we can get the work done. Because otherwise, I mean, we're going to be all day messing with people's money, messing with people's lives, that's what we're doing. And if you say something out of order, be a woman and own up. You was out of order too. So, I will be supporting the chair.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, no, chair. You know what, I can't, I can't sit here when we talk about bullying. In my opinion, you were trying to bully your colleagues, Councilwoman Lewis, to vote for this resolution that we had, uh, actually to vote for this resolution with your brand that you gave. I took that as bullying. Now, the pot can't call the cow black. You know, you sitting here talking about Councilwoman, Councilwoman, uh, Barris bullying? No. I would say that you were the one that, um, did the bullying tactics tonight. Everything, you know what, the meeting was going on. I don't even understand why she did that whole dialogue in the beginning, because it was unnecessary. You, you turned this whole meeting around. It was unnecessary. We're sitting here, we're as, asking our questions. We should be vote, actually, we should be on the next resolution. Two or three resolutions down. But see, Councilwoman Lewis, and I'm just going to say this, you start throwing the digs and you think that we should sit here and take your digs. No, it doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. If you let, if you let it throw digs, be prepared to get some digs thrown back at you. But this is, this is, this is what you do. You gaslight this community. Like you, like you all good. But you sit here and you constantly throw digs. You constantly bully your colleagues. And it's wrong. You sit here calling somebody a bully, but you're the biggest bully out here. And I will not support the chair on, on this. Because the chair should have stopped you in the beginning.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. Murphy.
Listen, you guys. Here we are, taking this long to discuss, we, we was really rolling with this agenda stuff. We was getting this stuff done. My colleague, in all due respect, Dr. Lewis, my colleague just brought up a issue of the repurposing of the vacant lots. She had a question, like I had a question, when it came down to my part of doing a, a, a trail with a category that said, like, my colleagues were down there talking about why it just didn't line up to them with vacant lots. They had a question. We should have just let them go and say what they wanted to say, so we can move on with the meeting. But because you intervened on a, um, perception of what you think their thoughts was, now we here. If you would have just let them go and talk, and say what they wanted to say, based on why she feel like the, um, twenty-five thousand dollars didn't line up with that, um, category, let her express her thoughts and get it out, move on. So, we can clear, I think I responded to her and, and let her understood the same thing that I was saying. So, I think she, I don't, I didn't see that my colleagues was just going to vote against it. But then when you brought up what you wanted, and you took it into a whole other direction, and now here we are, and we going back and forth, and we here now on one resolution, but we should have just let them go and heard and expressed, like she said, she have a right to question it, and if she want to let her question it, if, if she got questions on this resolution, just let her say what she want to say. Don't say nothing. It may not be what you want, let her figure it, and get over and be done with this nigger, so we can move on. So, now we here with these rulings that, that gave the warning, and you gave the warning, and now y'all talking about baby mama, baby daddy drama, that has nothing to do with this agenda. And we got the administration, the public, people waiting to move on to get this meet done, and here we are going in a back and forth with each other because someone said something that my colleague didn't agree with. Let them talk. I'm, I'm against all of this. I just want to get the meeting done, and if they say something that we don't agree, we'll just let them say it. We ain't gotta always agree. I'm done.
Madam Chair. So, I believe the appeal is on whether or not you were wrong in giving her a warning.
Correct.
Right, so.
Just, just.
But they both, they did both get a warning, but only one person appealed it to a warning. Yeah. And so, what, what we're dealing with here is, again, the question of whether or not the chair was out of order for giving them both, well, right now, it's only one person appealed, for giving our colleague in the sixth ward a warning. The chair was well within her rights to warn both parties because she asked both parties to stop on more than one occasion. And they both chose to keep going, and so they both received a warning. This appeal is on whether or not the warning should have been given, not on who you care, don't care for. Long as you vote for the residents, who, we never got to care for you. But, that doesn't change the fact that the appeal is on whether or not the chair made the right call in warning her. She did not get a warning alone, they were both going out of order because they were voting out of order. That's what this appeal is on, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing how everyone is now spoken, um, I will make my statement, neither party has a warning. So, in the last, we admonished several times, I issued my warning. This shall ruin of the chair be overturned, men and women, both parties.
That's correct.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
The vote is two, yes, four, no, that, um, appeal fails. We're going back to timing, I was, I, um, we in the second round. We had, um, Ms. Woodford Carter, Ms. Burns, and Dr. Lewis speak, so any other discussion in the second round? See, nun, I will take my time. I don't care what they call their little buildings. I don't care, it's their project, they can name whatever they want. This is, would you like to address this? Yep. Go ahead, can you explain why this is called the chalets?
What they are are, um, I represent the Kennedy Center Board, referee could not be here, but they're vendor chalets, just small garage-type, nothing fancy, just a small garage-type. Vendors can use those food trucks, and have space for food trucks. Um, the, the name chalet might sound fancy, but that's not really what it is, it's just a small garage-type, where vendors can use the space for farm businesses, they want to sell stuff, they want to do things. That land next to the center used to be an apartment complex, years ago, people might have been with subs, it was torn down. We, over the years, was cleaning up, people were trash, dumped stuff in there, and we would cut the grass, we were overgrown, we would keep it up. Finally, we, through a lot of haggling, we got it through the land back. And so, the vision is to use it for the community, for people to use. We want to call this chalet, it's, it's just a small little garage. Somebody said they have all certain things in grand blank, if you want to take a look at those, I don't know exactly where they are, but they're used for vending purposes. We want to build a pavilion here for the community to use. We want to put a life-size chest thing for the kids to play in, and other things for the kids in the community. And we want to put a walking trail around the property. It's almost three acres, it's big enough to do that. So, that's what the, um, we envision it is, instead of just being an abandoned, overgrown field, we want to put it used for the community.
Thank you very much, thank you for the very good explanation. I grew up on Marja, which is a couple of blocks from there, and I'm very familiar with that, that area. And I remember the apartments. So, like I s, I mean, I was confused when I first saw the word chalet, and I looked at it, and I went, oh, okay, there maybe going to be little, um, kind of like the, the booths at the farmer's market outside, where they can set up their wares, and it's going to be an whole thing, they're going to have a group, and something to display their wares on. What you call it, I don't care. I don't care. It's your project, which you name it, is your business. We have nothing to do with that, and I support this project. Thank you very much for coming down, I appreciate it. See, I was the last to speak, roll call to send, um, Resolution two-four-zero-zero-two-six to council.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The vote is six, just zero, that will be going to council on Monday. Um, this, the, the next resolution is two-four-zero-zero-two-seven, I will take a motion to send to council.
Um, this, I would like to send, um, Resolution This is, um, for another resolution that council will, um, separate.
Yes. Okay, this motion for, um, seven-two-four-zero-zero-two-seven, council, there's a force. This could be the council's second, and send a resolution two-four-zero-zero-two-seven to council, is there any discussion? Madam Chair. Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
This will be chalets.
Oh, you bet.
He must have laid it before. Yes. Is this, is this one over this one before?
Yes, it did, uh, this one was presented in October.
This is a separate one?
Yeah, and we had to rename the community number.
This is one over then, um, College Culture Area?
No, this is the lid, it's, um,
Lid base.
Yeah. Which we do, that we remove the houses, hoods, to match the hoods. And because we did, we did CDBT, matched that on top.
Okay. I got it, thank you.
Read them. I'm done. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Second round? See nun, roll call votes, send two-four-zero-zero-two-seven to council.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you mean H and R?
Yes.
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 Vote is six, just zero, that will be going to council. The next resolution is two-four-zero-zero-two-eight, reallocation of art funds for the disability network. Uh, take a motion. Motion, send two-four-zero-zero-two-eight to council. Is there support?
Support.
Send motion properly seconded, two-seven, two-four-zero-zero-two-eight, any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Can you contact around the money for chalets?
Uh, this is, this is a different project.
It's a different?
Yeah. The other one, you know, for the home. Rebuilding, their, their building is, is torn down. So, they have, uh, they want to do some repairs to their building because they asked them to be a vaccination site. And because, uh, they, they don't have, like, it's hard for disabled people to, like, get to their sites and stuff like that, so they want to do a couple of repairs to be able to, uh, do that. So, they get the home by, like, government or something. So, they, they wanted a vaccination site.
Okay. So, this is for them to be here, because they have been asked to be a
Vaccination, yeah, they want to be a vaccination site.
Is that one, is this house?
So, the door, and the door wrong, we want that overgrown back over there.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I got this now.
Yeah, we, we like to follow them fast. And so, this will allow them to do, really, it's to their building.
Yeah. So, for them on the second page, they have three things, and he, they have plenty of information, like this, sir.
This is gap one.
This is what you say.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy Carter.
Okay, so this puts, puts it in another category, this is, uh, gap five, okay? Whereas they have to match it with their own dollars, yeah. Okay, um, and so, what exactly are they going to do, Ms. Burns? They, they have, right now, with, with the challenges that they have, like, they have limited access to people, is that disabilities using tow truck vehicles, so they get over, you gotta walk two hundred, like, yards, and take the, you know, dangerous apartment, I talk over that. Then, they also have a lack of safe and unusable space, uh, office space for service delivery space in current offices due to design implications. And then they have general difficulty of finding the location, so their office is tucked in the back, like, in corner, that door wrong behind that dumpster and that closed subway. And there's no other business. And there's no other business, uh, or nonprofit that operate in it, and so.
So, so what, yeah. That's where the old subway was, the old subway was, right behind it, and that big dumpster. Right where the big locks?
Yeah.
Right there where the big locks was? Oh, okay, okay. It's on the other end. It's not, and you can't go through the mall area to get to that. This is, yeah, they got some other exit.
Okay, right, and then they have the MyConway to match with two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Um, I thought the disability network was moving to the MTA, um. I, I thought, I think, well, I thought they, again, they built it from down there to.
Now, the MTA made the fourth, add the home foundation.
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is the building on Door Highway off of, uh, when you get off the highway, that disability network, um, either purchased or leased from the MTA. I thought they moved from down there on Door Highway to the, um.
MTA?
Yes. They, when I was on the MTA board, we did, um, lease them or rent them. Or they even purchased one of the two, um, that building where the old Baker College, it used to be a dealership, right behind there is where the disability.
It says it right here, yeah, look on the second page. It says it at the bottom in that bottom paragraph. That they purchased the building for one dollar on MTA's transportation.
Correct. So that's not on Door Highway, it's in the door wall, is what I'm saying. So I, they got two sites.
They, they, I believe it is.
So they, they, I thought they was moving. I thought they was moving from that site to this site. So if they was moving, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make it make sense.
Okay.
I know for sure that they got a building on, on MTA campus.
Right, they just purchased that one, and they renovated that building.
So that, that, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So why would we be spending some money?
It's not possible to have two sites at one.
No. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you could be right. I'm just trying to figure.
Okay.
I didn't think they was having two sites, so I thought they was moving from my site to the other. I got some reserves.
Yeah.
Chalet.
I, I'll do it. I'm done.
Okay.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
And, and I'm just wondering, because I know you all send these resolutions up here. So this is probably a question for you, for, and for the clerks, as well as the council. Uh, because it seems that more than, at more than one point tonight, we needed to speak with the people directly. And so I know that we did not, um, give this agenda in a timely manner. But my question is, when you're sending these resolutions up here, um, are, are these people called to give the opportunity to come speak on these resolutions themselves?
Yes, they are, sir, because when we had a meeting earlier with council, they were called. And then we weren't sure whether it was going to be all, but then we didn't get the re- the, uh, agenda until five o'clock, almost quarter to five, so. There, there wasn't enough time to call it.
Um, yeah, so we need to go back to ensure that the agenda is given out in a timely manner so that they can come and speak. Because, and I, I, I want to tell you, so thank you so much for your patience, right? Because it's not easy to stand here when you have multiple people that you have to speak on behalf of and remember all of that information for those people. So thank you for standing here patiently and trying to best address these, um, concerns for us. But, uh, what we will do is try and make sure that that agenda gets to you in a timely manner. You're clear on who will be on the agenda so that they can come and speak on their own. We have that way. Because I, again, I think you are doing a phenomenal job, right? With having to remember all of this. But I, I, I just want to make sure that they have the opportunity to alleviate any concerns. Sometimes the best person to speak to your resolution is the actual people. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll take some time just to call my colleagues' attention to the bad part of the resolution. Where it talks about this is actually the MTA building. Just to clear up the, any, yeah, but, you know, we were talking about it to ourselves, but the people at home and who are watching didn't hear our conversation. So they did purchase a building from MTA, and this money is going to help renovate that building to make it handicap accessible for their, the peo- for their clients. So, um, and there is, um, money from the MyFoundation and the MTA, I believe, I'm not sure about. But, um, no, the MTA, the MyFoundation will manage funds up to two hundred and fifty thousand. So, um, this is, that was given its first round. Any discussion on the second round? Hearing nun, roll call, Vanler, on the resolution two four zero zero two eight for your allocation of ARCA funds, disability network.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
In time to set.
Yes.
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 The vote is six yes, zero no. The next resolution is two four zero zero two nine, reallocation of ARCA funds to Salvation Army. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion sent two four zero, manage the motion, um, resolution two four zero zero two nine to council.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly seconded, to send two four zero zero two nine to council. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead. You're the first one here. I'm just going to type this round six. Go ahead.
Um, how are you? I know you're spoken for. You were asked in here before. I don't think the resolution was being called before. And you sat here, and you have two other people back there with you. Um, and so can you tell us about your project?
Sure, uh, our proj- our project is, uh, they're asking for funding to support the renovation of the Nutzer Center. This is a property that is on Hurley Medical Center. Uh, this has, uh, the programming is medical respite. It's designed for, uh.
And where is it located at?
It's, uh, called the Nutzer Center, and it is located on, uh, Hurley Medical Center. It's on Turi, uh, eight oh one Turi. Uh, just, uh, uh, I think it's, uh, north, just north of the hospital. It's on the campus. It's a former residential for, um, for male residents. So, uh, the space, uh, can house a little over a hundred, uh, residential beds. And, uh, we have a plan, uh, to introduce medical respite services on the lower level of the building. And that will be fifty beds. Now, we need, uh, funding in part to get the space ready to introduce those beds. There's a number of, uh, it's, the building's forty years old. And so fixtures are extremely old, uh, flooring is extremely old. There's no sprinkler system, there's no elevator, ADA compliant, it's not there. So there's a lot of work that needs to happen for the property license and to meet accreditation expectations.
So do we have to put in an elevator or in the grand closet?
No, we're, we need to put in an elevator. So I do have funding, um, that, um, is complementing our request. Uh, and this is coming from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
And so do we have a big need for people who are coming out of the hospital for, um, for care to go back?
The city, the city of Flint has the need in every single ward. And, uh, so we are working with a number of, uh, social service agencies, a number of healthcare, um, agents, centers, including Hurley Medical Center, uh, where we're playing health cooperation, uh, and a number of, um, other community departments.
I'm sorry, I can't place the building on you yet.
It's across the street from the Martin's Children's.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's been sitting vacant for, uh, for a long time. And, um, Hurley Medical Center has offered that, uh, space to Salvation Army in thirty years. And, uh, so it's been thirty years.
Okay. Okay, um, well, that answers my question. And, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking up something as you're talking. So, because I'm not, I was trying to look up the address at the time. And I like to make sure that we have a person speaking that can get me my attention. Although my ears here, my eyes were, were there, I was, I was, um, listening to what you were saying. Thank you for, um, making.
That on the union's.
Patient. Um, and it's, it's seen strange, as our, you know, as our economy and what changes, so has the needs of the community.
It really has, and the Salvation Army has, um, heard of the need. Uh, we've not done this alone. We've been dealing with a number of homeless service agencies.
Of course, some of your partners in this.
Uh, we're working with, well, uh, first, uh, Hurley Medical Center, um, they were the first to really step up, uh, to the plate. Uh, we're working with the Greater Flint Health Coalition, um, GHS, Carriagetown, um, my brother's keepers. And then, uh, the beautiful thing is, uh, Salvation Army has already established a number of key relationships for operating money. Uh, so we're working with, uh, great healthcare partners, um, that will pay for these services, including, um, Mara Health, United Healthcare, Meridian, Melina, Priority Healthcare. Uh, they're the ones that will provide, um, the, the operating funding to make this a reality. Also, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is greatly invested. Uh, we have been working very closely with them to change, uh, policy to include medical respite as a billable Medicaid code. And, um, I'm happy to announce that, uh, that language is, is a proposal that's going to reach the D C for approval.
That, thank you, that's my time. I will, I will, we can talk to you. I'm sure you'll have an opportunity. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Where, where is this building headed again?
On the Hurley Medical Center campus, eight oh one Turi.
It's on the Hurley Medical Center campus.
Patrick and.
Just, is just north of the hospital.
Is it on Grand Traffic?
Patrick.
Patrick Street.
Allen Flusher Road.
Patrick and.
I mean, Flusher.
Patrick and Flusher.
Flusher.
Eight oh one Turi place.
Patrick and Flusher. Okay, I know Flusher.
Patrick comes up the backside, like, where senior hospitals, where you go to the, where seniors go to the doctor.
Urgent care.
Urgent care.
Like, going to the urgent care, it's that building right there, at the stoplight. It's been there for a hundred years, where the unions used to be. They, they, they kicked out all the unions from that building.
Oh, was it across the street?
Yes.
From, uh, I know the, the building in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
You can see it from the street.
Drop my mother on my work, and it's a building right across the street from the old E I.
It, not, not that, it's on the corner, at the light, right there at the light, question. Is the parking lot from where the laundry is that, where that parking lot, and it's right across the street from that building?
It's a former.
So that building, um, vacant now?
It is, it's, it's been sitting vacant for almost two decades. Um, they, they do have, uh, a little bit of storage there. I think there's an office that's still currently available right now. It's being utilized.
And then this is for two million dollars?
The, the project that we're working on is, uh, over four million dollars.
Okay.
Um, in the Salvation Army, we have, um, worked with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And we have raised, um, well over a million dollars to go towards, um, fundraising.
So you've still got some more from there?
We do, and so the funding that we're asking for is for, uh, specifically for this medical respite program uh, that will help homeless individuals or imminently homeless, uh, individuals that are healthy enough to be discharged from a hospital setting, but they need recuperative support and recuperative care.
I'm, 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 I just want to, just to ask them to do it right.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion in the first round? Any other questions in first round, second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
And they're, they're very, um, so where would they normally go? Because I know there's a need for this. When they, you know, when you're out the hospital, and often a lot of the people who, um, they may miss out on mental health, and they don't have a place to go. So where would they normally go? Would Salvation Army try to fill that gap or?
Uh, well, um, currently, we are providing some service, uh, at the Detroit Salvation Army location for medical respite.
So you would take them from here to Detroit?
It, yes, and that's the problem. The challenge is there's nowhere for them, for, uh, these patients to go. So they, they unfortunately get stuck in the hospital, and the hospital is looking for a cost-effective alternative. Um, medical respite is somewhat of a very innovative, cost-effective approach to providing a, uh, a high level of care for these at-risk population. Unfortunately, what happens are people get discharged to a street, get discharged to a hall, and maybe there's, um, inadequate utilities or just not enough support. A number of barriers that prevent them from doing, um, following through with their care plan, their discharge care plan, following through with, uh, going to the primary care physician, doing the, the type of, um, medical wraparound that is needed for them to properly recuperate, so they do not go back into the emergency department, do not go back.
So it closes that revolving door, so they can heal completely. So would there be nurses, uh?
Yes.
Who will take care of these patients?
Yes, um, we, the Salvation Army, Harbor Life will leverage, uh, the services that we have, which, uh, there will be the medical director, there will be, uh, twenty-four seven nursing, uh, case management, peer support, all in a integrated health environment. I'm so happy that you brought up mental health, because mental health is a significant issue. And so you get people in the emergency department, there's not enough residential beds for mental health. But once they stabilize, medical respite can be a, a backup here, so we can make sure that the patient continues on with their medication, and then they get to the psychiatrist for that follow-up care.
And I think it will make a difference for Hurley Hospital, too, because you'll see people in emergency where they're trying to, uh, tend to, uh, care of the people, then you have the mental health patient who may have an issue or something. And it, it just kind of, you know, and you see, I, I think this makes, I, I, I'm going to support this, but I'm glad to see that this is the service that's being provided. I didn't know that you had, I know, I know there were people getting discharged to the street, because I know, um, it's a different level of view. And they don't have a place to go, but I didn't know you had to go to Detroit, and then to transport that.
It is, it, it, that is a demonstration of the need, uh, right here in Flint. And, um, we want to make it available right here for all wards. And, um, we need your support to make that a reality. I've got all the contracts for the operating, I've got IDHHS putting money into this facility. I need the support, uh, uh, from Harbor to help us to do the medical respite.
I support this. We only ask that you invite the city council so that we can celebrate when this comes to fruition.
Please.
Because this is huge for our community.
Thank you.
It's huge.
Thank you.
You guys start taking care of our community.
Yes, thank you, and everyone is welcome. I would like to personally invite everyone to come and have a tour. You can see, you know, where we are today and where we.
Send an email.
Absolutely, my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Any other discussion in the second round? Saint nun, roll call, sent, um, resolution two four zero zero two nine to council.
Ms. Brisling?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
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 Ms. Carter?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no. That motion will, that, that resolution will go to council. Um, the next resolution is two four zero zero three zero, reallocation of ARCA funds, disability network for senior and disabled home repair. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to send two four zero zero three zero to council.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, I will, I will give, um. Hold on just a second, hold on a minute. Let me get caught up behind my.
Let me get caught up behind my own tape. I went on and didn't make it up. Okay, that was you, Ms. Burns, you made the motion? Right, yes, and, um, Candace made the second, and it was Mr. Murphy, so I'm gonna take Candace. First round, this, this Burns, right?
Yes. This is Dusha?
Yep. My last one. Um, can you tell us what this is about? Yeah. Um, was this on our?
Which one we on?
No. This is, that's reality, this is new. So, this is coming from the forty million that was. This is coming from, everybody can cry. According to information, all of the, all of these resolutions are coming from that money that we allocated, that we sent to the general funds, all of them. Every ARCA dollar that comes before us, all brand new. Is, um, these were not, these are funded, allocated, and used, that were sent to the general fund that we are spending now and adding. That was, this is not a community grant, that is part of that forty million that went to the general fund.
Okay, but this is new.
This is, okay, all of these are new. Yeah, yeah, I get that, that was just by brand new. Yeah, that's right.
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
There's no.
Yeah. No, no. This, this, all right, I'm sorry. Um, this is a resolution that the administration came based on its discussions with myself and Dr. Lewis to increase home repairs as quickly as we can, and since this is actually coming from revenue replacement dollars.
So, this was brand new?
Yeah.
And this is coming from some.
We ain't get the deal.
Ad hoc committee just made this decision to put this in here. No?
With the administration?
With the administration, right, right.
We asked to increase.
So, this was just done to increase it?
At this point, that's, this is a start, this is a start.
Okay. So, I don't know how, this is brand new, this is just not from out.
Yes.
So, my ques, so this is new, they decided that with the ad hoc committee with the administration, that would add an additional one million for home repair that would be targeted towards, um.
Seniors.
Senior. And I have not had a chance to read any of this yet, and so I need to be fast read this quick, because it's a million dollars.
Yeah.
And how do you get these million dollars to people? I mean, I mean, it's for, it's for.
Now, when they doing the home repairs, it's going to happen, you matter? It's for disability network, it's just case care.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's for fifty-five and older.
I'm sorry. It's for fifty-five and older, so it's two different brackets, so, you know how some people work, and then they get disabled, and they can't work anymore? So, the, it's, it's geared to those people, and it's also geared towards seniors who are sixty, sixty-five and up, sixty-five and up. So, it's for the disabled, it's for seniors that are sixty-five and up, and it doesn't limit what they do to their house.
So, it's for disabled people, fifty-five and, uh.
Yeah.
Who were the most impacted? Does that qualifies?
Yeah. If you can take the fun of that, yeah.
So, so this was, so is there a lot of the options about, so, do they all have, are they paid, do you work already? Or is it a program?
Yeah, it's, it's, they already do work for seniors. Yeah, but this would be specifically, you know, for that group, so it would help more people with disabilities that may not have been able to get down to another place or sign up, remember you were talking about that, because they couldn't get online or.
Okay, they couldn't, and they come, they went, I'm going to call them, they got the boards. And it was difficult when they got down, and it was so that they couldn't do it again, or that it was closed. And Bethany has, I heard you get her, she watching, six, where Bethany has, she need to be getting on this, and she was just down on her walk.
So, it's specifically for that age who have been, you know, laid off from work because they can't go back, or, uh, grandkids or something like that. And then, disabled, and the sixty-five and up seniors.
And so, was this also about Ms. Mayfield?
Yes, well.
How was Ms. Mayfield? Sixty-five, I'm telling you.
Yeah, it would help her, man, because it's not limited to just women.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know you had spoken.
Yeah, I spoke it together.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna read you, okay, same thing.
Sorry.
Yes, um, Ms. Murphy, um, what, what's the criteria?
Excuse me?
Any other?
Excuse me?
Any other, um.
Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor. Thank you, go ahead. Any other, you know, so, they have to qualify, which means they have to have proof of disability, you know, they receive pensions, or cannot work due to sickness or illness, and that's. And they, they have to, for this grant for home needs, but this could be anything that they need for their house, so it just not moves, yeah.
Okay.
So, they just have to show proof of disability or pension that they own, yeah.
Okay.
Same here, do I? Any other discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
So. With this, um, so, I, do, do people already apply? Because I'm, I'm just thinking about some residents in the third ward that's been trying to get some help with their house for the longest. They went through the, um, my hap, hap program.
Yes.
Where they paid up to twenty-five thousand dollars, got all of that cleared up, went to Habitat, or went to Metro Community Development, just to get turned away, and when I go and look at their house, it's a shame, how they got the tariff toward owner roof. I mean, it's just very unfortunate. And what do I tell people like that, that keep coming to me and be like, Quincy, I need some help with my house, I need some help with my house? Even, and, and I heard people that are coming out here with, uh, sixteen million that didn't want to use for ARCA dollars, we allocated five million, this one million ain't gonna be available, but, Shelly, what I'm telling you, to go back to the mayor, and to your boss, this problem with owner occupied rehab is bigger than sixteen million, five million, one billion. I don't care what you allocate, it's gonna be a whole bunch of people still left without getting some help. And not only that, Shelly, when I look at all the monies, when I go down here and look at all the buildings that they build in the town, the rehab and the renovation of all of these apartments, new apartments, old apartments, we are spending millions of dollars in rehabbing these apartments. But when it come down to coming up with some money for owner occupied rehab, this is a needle in a haystack, when it comes down to the need. The need is much greater than what we allocate. So, I ain't against the one million. What I'm against, I don't think we doing a deeper dive when it comes down to actually looking at, going after some real federal dollars to help these residents that need some help. They, it's like they, homes at the tipping point, uh, let me just move, and go move into a, a apartment, because it may be cheaper, we need to move into a apartment than to maintain our houses. It's almost like, we just make these people houses go to waste, and then if we say we finna allocate one million dollars right now, it's gonna be a whole bunch of people trying to hurry up and run to try to get some help, and then there's gonna still be some people left off. How do we, where do we as council, how can we, if somebody called us, how can we be like, okay, so and so, just like she, she just said, Beth has been trying to get some help? How can she really go and say, Beth, go to the disability network, and she could go, and they actually go there? Or is they gonna be like, well, we already got this list of people, they come first? How, how do that work?
Well, it's like when we did with the Metro, like, you have to take any list that they have previous, they cannot use for the ARCA. So, it has to be the people that apply for the ARCA dollars when you put it out there. So, it happened to me, those people can't be the black holes, they can't be anything like that. So, we have policy, we, city policy meeting with them today, to kind of outline what we expect from Habitat Metro.
So, let me ask you this, the Habitat or G-Car, I mean, um, Metro Community, did they already help people? Because I didn't get them.
They haven't started yet, because, we had to have that policy meeting today, to let them know what they can and cannot do with ARCA. Thank you, any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Oh, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
And this is just more so of your tour, what the last thing that I just made, I know that there was some kind of, um, procedure and compliance, things that were put in place today. Are we gonna get a copy of this, that we know, um, what their parameters are, and what they are doing up there? Thank you.
Any other discussion in the first round? Okay, and in the second round?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, are you saying that when, and, and I don't even know, I know we allocated one point of bond, I got to have one point of bond for Metro. Did they already, they spent those dollars?
Yeah.
They haven't, if they did, do we, when would we know as a council? I mean, how, how is this application process working? Like, how do people know that, uh, go and apply for some help, what they, it's just all confusion to me.
They already taken the applications, you know? I know, they have taken applications, but they haven't started working, because they couldn't afford this policy.
So, they have, have not took applications yet?
No, they have.
They have to.
Some of the functions that we had around, so they have taken some, I don't know if they're all full, but they were.
Well, I said, when, like, me, I'm a councilperson, when, well, I have known to tell my residents to apply. Who, who, who they talk to?
They just had to meet at three o'clock today, so.
Huh?
They just had to meet at three o'clock today.
Three o'clock today, what the man heard about that?
Phil, you make your.
That girl said. Somebody just talked about today, because.
Mr. Man John. Zip it, please.
So, shut up.
So, that was because, because. And it was Tricia and that Metro team, and they already had this.
So, we saying, they don't even laugh. These two council people, it's a false, it's a lie. He don't even live there. With the process.
But they probably, they probably just. They probably haven't had a chance yet, because they don't need it for me to work out. I, I can't just.
I'm just saying, I'm frustrated.
Well, the policy will have, after the next, the policy and procedure will revise, and so the mayor will sign it like, ah, and then everything's done.
So, are y'all going to press conference and, um, telling the public if they're taking the apply or no? Or is one person or two people? Because you know what I also noticed, is that when we agree and approve something, and then they do a press conference, we still don't be knowing about it until I see it on the news.
Well, we working better right there, right?
I mean, and it took five votes to get anything passed, just like that little neighborhood service center on, on Cairo Road. I, I see it on the news, but it took five votes to, so I just hope that y'all take into consideration, when y'all doing these press conferences, and y'all doing these big announcements, it takes five votes to get stuff passed. So, it's almost like, we passed and stuff, but then when y'all do the big announcement, we watching on TV, just like everybody else.
Well, it's the council people come, so I'm not sure how the message gets out, so, we'll do a better job.
I never know until I watch the TV.
So, I'm just saying, I don't, I.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other discussion in the second round?
Yes, so, 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 Mr. Murphy, you didn't get an invite, and you just said vote?
You learned more than that.
So, okay, so, I want to ask this question. The, um, improvements to be anything they need. As far as like, they need a rail, rug, any window, whatever, yeah. And what is the, what is the limit? It's the same rules and procedures that we did with, um, the other, you know, you have to be, uh, you are in phase or whatever, you have to be. You only have to live in your house, you need a, this is a requirement. And, uh, so it's the same process, that you have to be in a state. Oh, okay, oh, I see, it is fifteen, fifteen thousand ARCA dollars. Okay, yeah. All right.
So, so.
And it really comes to work. Um, to your point, more money should have gone into the line item of home improvements, because residents are gonna be left out. We didn't, we didn't put enough money in, into that, um, line item of home improvements. And I know that we made motions to increase it, and it was voted out. So, I find it interesting to hear you say that residents are gonna be left out. Yes, five million dollars, just not enough. And we just said, with the Habitat yet, what, one million, one point five million? And, and Metro, one point five million? And G-Car, one point five? That's not enough. Eight hundred and fifty, it's not enough.
That money.
Five million dollars, not enough. So, and it's up to the council, we could have voted. We could have voted to increase that.
Really?
But it kept failing, you know? So, that's all I'm gonna say, but I hope they get invited, give them their vote. We'll do a better job. Any other discussion? Any other discussion, go ahead. So, the fifteen thousand dollars cap that, um, each council can get with the one-year, um, requirement to be in the private, yes. Um, okay, so, there will be a press conference, you know? Quincy, there, there will be one. Y'all need to make sure Quincy Murphy get one. I'll make sure you all get one. You have to vote. You, you gonna be on the invitation since now, okay? Matter of fact, everybody should be, be invited to these press conferences, because it is not something that the mayor is doing alone. This administration has a responsibility to be there to all council members when you requesting and asking our vote, for our vote to push these forward. If you want to show that you're working with the council, it needs to look like you're working with the council. And this does not look at, look like. When Mayor stood, when, when, and Kilby was first, but then when he stood at, um, Arthur Woodson's cancer cluster study, I stood behind him with the microphone, you're doing it for the community. When he showed us at St. Mark's, it was for the community that Arthur Woodson involved towards the cancer cluster study, and it was about the cancer cluster study and the community. You look like everyone, we're saying we're grieving. So, we have to make sure, at least invite, just, if you, if you choose to decline, because Council Murphy won't. And so, we want to make sure that he, he gets that, and he chooses to decline. She got separated. We, we got separated. So, this, I, 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 I do support this, but it is not enough when you did have, as a council, to, um, to actually, and I think Council May had put on the floor, um, fifteen million.
Will you?
Yeah, maybe it. I put one on the floor for. I put one on the floor for probably five million, and it's just going down. And it's just not, it's just not enough. And it's just not, it's just not enough, so.
Mr. Whitson.
What, laughing? Are you talking about laughing?
Go ahead.
So if you can please make sure.
It's Black History Month.
We can't laugh.
That invitation's going to have to council.
I do it like.
But I got a feeling that Council Murphy will be like, invite this man. All of them, he's going to get the preferred invite.
Thank you.
Any other discussion in the second round? I'll take a few minutes to discuss, um, this, you know, as we're going through and we're seeing how the community grants are falling out, we're seeing where we can move money around. And that's what our, that's what we're doing. And we hope to add more money to this category. In our meeting today, we talked about the process of applications, how it will be chosen, how people were chosen, uh, excuse me, how much money they would be upfront, um, funded, what the requirements were for the residents to have that. And that will be for me. And so it was a good discussion, we had a good meeting. Nothing could come out purely in public until they signed on the guideline because that's how brewers start. So, um, but now that we are trying to make it as fair and equitable as possible, um, Dr. Lewis really is interested in the insurance issue around the town, around town. And, um, so we're using that, make this mechanism of applying for home repairs to gather information on that piece so that we can take a look at what's going on. So I wanted everybody to know that. Um, but of course, I'm in favor of this increases, um, home repair again, we do have a need. And unfortunately, there isn't even enough money in the ARCA, overall ninety-four point six million dollars to cover all over here since he's in the city. And it's going to fall short. It doesn't matter how much we allocate. And there's so much other needs, like Salvation Army needed money. Um, we have, we have some other mental health issues, um, grants that are coming forward. Those are needs as much as home repair. And it's important that we, we make, we stick to our plan, see where the money falls out and move money as necessary into whatever needed categories there are. Thank you. This, um, this is the vote to send two four zero zero three zero to council. Madam Chair, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. The vote is five yes and zero on the address. Resolution goes to council. Yes, it is.
I got, I got dinner in the back.
No, you are done.
Oh, thank you. She got dinner in the back. He didn't bring enough for everybody.
Mr. Green. All right, this is, um, the next resolution is two four zero zero, zero zero zero, five four zero, excuse me. Two four zero 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 zero, assistance city of residents for closures and possible convictions. Uh, there a motion? Madam Chair? Yes. I would like to, uh, since two four zero 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 zero, assistance to the residents for closure of possible convictions to the city council. Is there support?
Support.
Is your suggestion, Madam Chair, sent it to, send two four zero 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 to council? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
So you, you, the, the, did you, um, read my report on the resolution to, um, take out, uh, East Michigan services and, and our legal services? You want to pick that off?
We may have talked about it, but we didn't go on.
Say that again?
Um, we may have talked about it, but.
A, a, a mind, is a minder, Dr.? I want, um, this, this resolution got to do with those hundred and ninety, um, residents that, um, were included in that, um, cell. A reminder, you was in a meeting with us with the developers that brought those hundred and ninety properties. How many, um, residents that, um, do you know? Did not have water?
That I don't know off the top of my head. I mean.
Was it like ninety?
Something like, it was like half of them. I just talked to him yesterday as well, he's trying to sort out the houses and trying to get little licenses and stuff, so he's still working on that.
Um, do you know how many, maybe, um, I know we talked about some of the houses is in disrepair to the point where the resident still got to move eventually somewhere. So what we was trying to do with this right here, once I left that meeting, was try to see if we can assist those residents that may have to be re-moved somewhere else because the house need to be fixed up because in order for the landlord, the new owner that brought all of these properties, um, will be able to do some work they can't work, and he says they can't work with them in the house. So we was trying to earmark some money just in case they got to move for first month rent deposit. And then if they got to move, some of the money may, um, have to go if they got to get the water. So the two thousand dollars that we was trying to earmark per resident was either to help them with first month rent, deposit, um, a backwater bill or utility bill. We just don't know what their financial situation is, but because they in one of those hundred and ninety homes and they probably going to have to relocate. I would say every, we earmarked two thousand dollars and they go restrict it towards either helping them with their pass, the water bill, help them with first month rent deposit, or old utility bill, or moving costs, maybe they have to, um, rent a U R truck or something. So it was just go fit into those restricted category for those residents. Or even if the owner that brought the hundred and ninety homes wanted to resell them back to property, maybe the two thousand dollars can go towards a dollar payment, towards them buying the house back because maybe he wants to sell it back to them. I don't think he was opposed to, um, selling the property back to them. I'm not sure, but I'm sure he brought them because he wanted extra money. I just don't know the case. And I know it's a case by case issue, everybody case has a say. So, and I did, um, talk to Captain of the charity. They, um, was willing to work with, um, facilitate this program and have them serve as the fiduciaries for this grant, for this allocated hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a minister. But what Captain of the charities was trying to do was work with other, um, agencies like Department of Human Services, United Way, and we all been coming together to see how we can leverage to buy additional funds just in case we need some more funding. So.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That was your time.
That's, that's all for me.
Okay. Any other discussion in the first round? Go ahead.
I think this may need some more work, Council Murphy. If you look at how the need is there, we do know that the investor who bought those properties, he has got his working with some of these homeowners. And some of them had saved, um, that money up because the land bank, they were going to buy their homes back. But that money, um, they kind of got, what you call, um, investor beat them to the punch. And so they had that money set aside to buy those homes back. But I don't know how we go about, this is really like a, um, I, I get the nature of, how you, you know, give, how you, you know, but then you turn it to like a, like a banking, you know, how, how do you figure who, who applies, who doesn't? And investor is, he's, he's selling some of his homes, you know, some from these people, and I don't even think they know it. You know, some of them. And then on top of that, he stayed, he doesn't have any agreement with any other people's properties. At all. And he's, he's not the landlord because he doesn't have a landlord attendant agreement with their company. So I get the, the nature of this, but it's, I mean, there is a lot of information that we need to be able to apply this to. You know, will it go to a dollar payment? Will it go to, um, to assisted housing? Or should we, you know, should we just say, give it to Captain Charity because they have a program, um, we've got Eastern Legal, um, Eastern Michigan Legal Services. And this is a service that they can actually buy. How, how is this going to be? So, so we need to, I think this needs to, to go back. I get the nature and I definitely get the need because a lot of people thought they're going to be able to purchase those homes back, some of them. And this just, you know, a total of ten thousand, ten thousand per council, some of them may not need it. You know, and if you're looking at, with a hundred and ninety homes, the three, one, three homes, the total, they got those properties at less than, what? Six thousand per property, that's not, those properties are listed, um, and they, they, they're going to make a run back. So I think this needs to, to go back. And I don't know, you know, have you talked to Captain Charity in Eastern Michigan, did they say how they would do it? Um, do you, Madam Chair?
Oh, that's the four calls. So, so what we doing, um, we've been doing zone meetings, and then I'll just add you in there. Um, so they meeting with all the rest of the other classes, but then I think the last thing I wasn't able to make. They got more. Um, so, then that's time they have to.
And then for P S P M and, uh, and then to the text, just to make sure I got it, please. Cause that way if you're not there.
Cause they got some good ideas, um, where they can convince them to, uh, teach your voice.
Okay. Have they, well, and I know they got people finding people's homes and houses, finding houses and emergency housing services. And so this is really an emergency housing, uh, we can, one of the things, you know, you show up and I don't know if they have decided to evict these people yet. They had not, and they said let, but they had not given the picture, so people would not have, you know, enough time to even deal with that. So if you can add me to that, I get the nature of it. I think we got an email down some people, you know, is this even enough with this place and a hundred and ninety home? So I would, I would like to be a part of that, so I'd be good with what they have to say. I, I like what you're doing. I, I, I'm done, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Call for the question.
Um, I'll take some time. Mr. Murphy, um, with my concern about this, it's a legal gathering. I don't know if it's illegal, um, use of funds, especially since these are coming from ARCA. So, um, that I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I think, went over to, um, the city attorney. I, I will be glad to ask. I will, I will do that. I'll put referral into the city attorney desk really will think about this resolution. And then we can discuss that. We should have, if this remains in council, I mean, in, in committee, um, then. Yeah, I was going to do that, so I made that motion. Um, then, um, we can have that for the next one. So I will make a motion to keep this, uh, resolution in finances through the authority and support. So it's moved, it moved to parability second and to keep this in finance. Very discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I, I really, um, think that we need to, we need to die, we need to end. Um, and I think Councilman, was it Councilman May or who brought up, who called, he rang it to figure out how this hundred and ninety homes go to one person? So I think we need to really be looking at how this happened. How did we even get here? Cause if one person can buy a hundred and ninety or two hundred and thirty houses and, and spend one point five million dollars to buy all of these, that, that just cut out the middleman and the small man. And there's no room for individuals to buy, uh, individual homes. It's a lot of times with the land bank happens, say somebody in a, um, family lose their house and their cousin or uncle or brother or sister or grandma or daughter or son live in the home. I, I think we got one on Russell Street where the mother passed away, but it was in her name. And then the son was standing there. So the house could have been sold through the land bank to, um, that son to keep it in the family. That's usually how it happened. And I think I had a house on Holbrook where, um, Laura took on her mom's house because her mother had ended up getting dementia and wasn't paying the taxes and all of that just kind of stuff. So there are different situations, but because one group, one owner was able to buy a hundred and ninety home. It just killed all of that. So now one owner got all, a hundred and ninety home, and we in a messed up situation. We, this is, this, this is all, this law school of a time. I, when I left off, that means I was very disappointed in what I was hearing that we allowed, uh, developer to come in Flint and buy a hundred and ninety home. That, that was so, was something else about that. Now, I'm a real, somebody dropped the ball there. They dropped the ball. This should not, never happen. Again. It shouldn't have to be him, but it did, and we here. And I just think we need to deal with that. I'm done.
Any other discussion? Madam Chair, go ahead.
Um, Pastor, I think he was discussing, I think he was the focus of the council, council, um, in regards to how that happened. I mean, the investors, the investors, they're here to make money. And it's a very shrewd investor. I mean, he's a group owner. And so they're here to make money. So if you look at the, there's forty-three homes which are outside of Flint, they make money on, you know? Some of those are nice homes. Then they got the other hundred and nine, they paid their money back. They're here to make money. So those, when they, the county ordinance was doing, was bundling those up to transfer to the land bank. That investor watched that pattern of how the land bank, because they're in our community, and watched the pattern of how the land bank bought this one property to send them over to the land bank. And this investor had the money running. It did, it won. And so. It was a sad thing, but we have to think to person to get it earned. So I think it's, 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 um, to, to, they need to die, and he could probably let me. So that you can have some good information. I think we have to have, be better about sharing information with each other from the causes that we are concerned about. I was the same thing. I think those, um, the homes, they probably affect their child more board than one, because there was six of them. I wish we're the home loss of a president. So I will be supporting to keep this in finance.
Any other discussion? The Madam Chair called the, uh, resolution two four zero 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 in finance. Yes.
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 Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
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 Vote is six, yes, zero, no, that stays in finance, the next resolution is two four zero zero three one. It's a budget amendment from the police department. I hope entertain a motion.
We are two four zero zero three one. Motion to see a two four zero zero three one, budget amendment, police department. Now, is there support?
The second is, is there any discussion?
Yep, I don't see chief three here, so who's in this place? There we go.
Angel.
On down. Right, it's right. So your, uh, police department is, uh, asking for a budget for two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five thousand. This is for, first off, if, if, cause people, they're watching, you already said your name and title too.
Uh, Jeff May, Chief, Deputy Chief, Police Department.
And so this amendment is needed for five minutes of budget?
Put funds over to, uh, help, uh, with the two, the two hundred and fifty-seven thousand change to, uh, towards the, uh, police training, uh, facility.
Facility and also be the architectural design, what account is this coming from?
Drug forfeiture.
How much is in drug forfeiture?
That, that is all.
Mister Phila Ford, you happen to know drug forfeiture, you got your laptop back there, how much is in that account?
Don't get scared now, sir.
And so this is the police department, the department that goes along with, I see the fire chief, uh, and he got. Oh, I, oh, so the fire chief, the department comes out of this budget. Okay, so how much is in drug forfeiture?
So, so I'm really, I'm.
Can we get a exact number? Time?
Do that.
Yep, um, I, if you can get it while before this is up. Okay, as I said before, your laptop, you. And so I already know about the project, so I don't, um, get me to, I'm gonna put you through the rest here. So, um, I do wanna know how much is in the drug forfeiture and then chief, um, and who you have with you?
Captain Urquhart.
Captain, Captain Urquhart?
Yes, Captain Keith Urquhart.
Okay, Captain Urquhart, you hear the support, you got something in.
If there's any questions in regards to the firearms, uh, portion of it, I'm the lead firearm instructor for the city of Flint, uh, police department, so.
How many firearms instructors do you have?
Uh, currently I have, uh, twenty, about fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and they're all for the city of Flint?
Yes.
And so I do support this project, this project has come up before because I know you guys have traveled to Chiwasi. You travel Chiwasi, allow the healthcare service if they're here in the city of Flint. Um, also to get the refiling done for the, um, public facility. It just doesn't make sense, your gun range downstairs is outdated and it's not safe. Um, and then it's gonna be also in the fire department also. And I wish Chief Green was here, but I wish him well to get better. Um, fire chiefs, how much, where your, where's this coming out? The, why the work projects?
Point of affirmation, the men I need to decide will look better, they have a lot of shine.
That's sexual, right?
Can we, um, how much, where's this coming out, your budget?
Well, we, uh, we were given before I began to fire chief, uh, one million dollars for ARCA for, uh, improvements. It was, I'm sorry, it was for, uh, equipment.
Okay.
And so what we did in the fire department, we got all of our equipment through other means.
Is that our, including those nice new shiny red fire trucks?
Absolutely.
That you received four of them?
Three and one's on the way.
So there's still four. Our kind of keep up public safety is important to me.
Thank you.
So, and we can find out how much is in that drug forfeiture, when will we start looking at the ground breaking? Or it gets started, this is gonna be at the old station off of North Street, right by North and Stewart, our industrial.
Industrial and Stewart.
Industrial and Stewart.
Well, we're in the phase of, uh, of designing, once the design pays and is all, then we will be going, uh, coming back to this body to, uh, start the re, start the build and the remodel of the fire station.
So this is just for architectural design?
Absolutely.
So we're paying, um, two hundred and sixty-six thousand from the police drug forfeiture for architectural design and two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five from the.
Fire department.
Fire, fire.
Yes, ma'am.
We're half, over half a million for design.
Design and architectural, yeah, design and.
Yes, I'm in the wrong business. But some drawing, so, um, and I guess we're waiting for Mr. Moore to, thank you, analyzing my time, but Mr. Moore just don't shoot.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
What, what is, um, training facility be just, um, geared towards, um, offices and fire, fire, okay, well, the, uh, you guys all, um, safety training for residents, because I, um, I just went and renewed my CCW license, um, at Williams Doug's, I share, not, um, it was just interesting to go through the whole training process and then, um, gun training. And I wanted to encourage my family members to, um, go and take the training, just so they know how to, you know, maneuver and make sure that they're going as safely. Is there any possibility that you guys may open it up or is it just gonna be protected?
No, no, absolutely, this, this, this is a large area, probably about two, two blocks and square. And, um, it would be open for, uh, public as well as, um, police and fire, it's interchangeable. Each of those buildings, the police will be using, some of our facility will be using some of their facilities and we're gonna instruct a, construct a fire training tower, uh, and it's all state of the art, we're gonna be using shipping containers.
What I'm saying is will residents be able to come and hit their CCW license, who is training or is just still.
I don't think, I don't think so. I don't think so.
That's, that's just not how I was thinking.
We'll, we'll look into it, but.
Opportunity to, to, to try and get people how to not be used, so they can shoot back at us.
No, 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 no.
Uh, I, I understand what you're talking about. So far as the renovation of the fire department, fire station, will you guys wait and start that? With the home, and I don't, if I'm looking at this, um, drawing right here, y'all not vacating the street, y'all?
Uh, possible Robert Street.
Cause I found all this in the whole building.
That's directly behind that fire station, Robert Street, we're looking to vacate that street.
Okay, so you go kind of vacate the street and go across the street to bring all the properties in.
What this do?
Yes, sir.
Is this another project that you're considering?
Don't start, you know, um, so, yeah, that's what I was deciding about, y'all vacating it. It ain't really no houses in that block. There, there's a couple that are vacant. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm fine. I said, thank you. Hopefully I, um, we can see some movement on this.
Any other discussion? In the first round, any other discussion in the first round, second round?
I want you to hire a critic and also your biggest supporter, Mister Phila Ford, can you tell me how much is in drug forfeiture? And I know that the police department just had this past weekend gun violence, gun programs.
This is just really quick, but we can get one number, we have, at least nine hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. There may be more there, but I didn't get, I didn't take that time to report that.
Nine, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand.
At least.
A minimal. And then how much did you get back from so far from this gun program this past weekend? I mean, this past weekend?
I think there's, there's gun buyback.
Gun buyback, how much did you do with the gun buyback?
Uh, we, we bought eighty-two guns today.
And what types of guns were they turning in?
Anywhere, some, any handguns, two, uh, twelve gauge street sweaters, uh, high bar rifles.
And then how much, how much was given, I was figured out, to get those?
Yeah, I don't know.
So we got nine, ninety-three, almost a million and they were missing from the police department, two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Uh, it's like two hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Two hundred and fifty, and I'm sorry, I, I'm on a different page now, so I apologize in my figures, if you're right, but a total, um, of almost half a million for both, um, between, um, fire chief and then from the police department.
Great.
And so we just, just make a statement, we have this for, um, to get moving on this, how much is gonna cost to build the structure?
That's what we're waiting to work out.
Okay, so, we're done. Purchasing.
So, hi, the president here is going to be in contract with Hubble Rockton Clark and what they're gonna do is work with the police department and the fire department to lock down. There's so many options, right? So exactly how many days they're gonna want to run rate, what they're gonna have the facilities look like? Um, engineering with the current building, that infrastructure that chief was referring to? What can be salvaged, what needs to be done there? So the majority of that's gonna be renderings that we can then present to you, um.
Is this the very first made?
Yes, they're, they're basically gonna bring the projects in life in order for us to fit it out for someone to actually build it.
Do we have like an approximate budget that we're going to be spending?
They will provide that within their proposal, based on what. We're hoping that with what it can bring to the community, that it could potentially render some additional funding with that as well.
From our Hubble Rockton dollars?
Hopefully, we'll see.
So lots of Hubble Rockton dollars. Okay, and that, I mean, really just talking to the city of heat that we have on here and you're combining this, the fire, that's gonna be a pretty big facility and then we have to look at all the state concerns, but you're shooting inside, shooting them inside the building, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I mean, I support the project as it goes along and I had, um, stated that to chief green before and I'm concerned about now having, I mean, we can have an extra power on the road, I think that's important. Um, that can be inserted as opposed to having to reach travel that distance because you have to meet that requirement for your certification. So, I support it, thank you, I'm done.
Hey, any other discussion? In the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? I think we actually were discussing two four zero zero three one and two four zero zero three two at the same time. So I see none, okay, this is the vote.
Call for the question.
Two four zero zero three, option.
Ben, let's go up, unfortunately, this is the vote.
Even the leader don't know what's going on.
Yes.
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 Vote is six, yes, zero, no, the next resolution is two four zero zero three two and that is entitled, the, um, Hubble Rockton Clark for Design of Fire and Police Training, Police Department Training Complex. Is there a motion?
Motion to send two four zero zero three two. Two four zero zero three two, okay. To council, okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay, it's moved to par 32nd, is there any discussion in the first round?
No.
Madam Chair, I have any more questions?
Does anybody get any questions?
Call for the question.
Seeing none, uh, no Hubble, Madam Chair, I'm sending two four zero zero three two to council.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
The vote is six, yes, zero, no, that motion goes to, that presentation goes to council. Thank you, gentlemen. No, it is not.
All right, anybody?
Resolution is two four. The next resolution is two four zero zero four zero. I will entertain.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, send two four zero zero four zero to council.
Is there support?
No.
So they moved to par 32nd and to send two four zero zero four zero to council, any discussion? Please, in the back, in the back.
They got their money.
Thank you.
They got their money.
And, and not in the hallway, but in the elevators.
They got their.
Any, any discussion?
They got their money, they high five.
Uh, you need to mount to our, um, this is your vision, increase election worker pay. Can you tell us what this is about?
So, what I'm asking for is an increase for all of our election workers, um.
I'm working this shit.
Right now we are consolidating precincts.
I'm working this shit.
And there are some, you're working, but I'm hoping that by, kind of, kind of more of a delay, you know, for people that have more responsibilities, that people will be more asked to watch and to, um, well, the chair, uh, the holder certain, certain shift, uh, to, 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 to be there for. Would, also gonna be a little more responsibility for each of these, uh, positions.
So you're going from, uh, fifty-four to twenty-nine precincts, correct?
Yes.
And so you're gonna be needing as many workers?
Correct.
But you are increasing the pay?
Correct.
Increasing from two hundred to two twenty-five and early voting workers, one twenty per day?
Oh, I'm definitely working.
And we have nine days of early vote.
Correct, um, there are some people that are committed to all nine days, but some people might just work one day to, 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 to.
And I think it has been a shortage before, with getting through COVID, wasn't it difficult? Are you over that concept now?
There, so, when, when that happened, we actually, the workers still, uh, personal part, uh, we still have a lot of time for this, for the election.
Thank you, Nicole Carter, and happy early birthday to you.
Um, that are active, we have about six hundred to seven hundred that we can pull from.
So you have a pool of six hundred?
But we will have to use it all.
Right, you don't have as many COVID sites.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
As long as I get hired.
Any other discussion?
Call for the question. Call for the question.
I have a question, um. Now, um, demanded we not increase the pay already? Like in the last budget cycle, was, was that planned increase in there or did we approve an increase and this is an additional?
There was an increase down in, I don't remember. There was an increase down in, I don't remember. And that's what you've done. That was, no. So that's what my, I mean, the first announcement, what they were, increased to the last time, but, I think it was probably twenty-five dollars average.
And?
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's great. Early voting is only in here, right?
What time?
Early voting will only take place here.
Correct.
So we'll only have one more voting place for early voting.
Right, early voting, I'm looking at maybe six, six workers.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none? Um, that was in the first round, second round? Madam Chair, go ahead, call for the question. Is there support?
Support.
Seeing? Okay, this is the call for the question. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. There was motion and support, it was second.
Yes.
That's briefly?
Yes.
Yes.
That's burned?
Yes. No.
That's a little bit.
No.
Vote is four yes, three no. I believe it takes two thirds of okay.
There you go. Be round down. Test.
That's four, so that motion, then the question will pass?
Yeah.
Now Clerk, roll call.
That's briefly.
Yes.
That's burned?
Yes.
That's burned?
Yes. Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no.
Flustered.
Okay, the next one is, um, resolution two four zero zero four one, increase order review worker pay. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, big motion that we send two four zero zero four one, increase order review worker pay to counsel.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved to department seconded. Any discussion in the first round? Madam Chair, go ahead.
I see two city clerk, this is the only eight board, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this board needs how much?
Um, three times a year. Three, four, five, ten.
How many, how many times?
Three.
Three times a year.
Okay, I know, I do not have one. For this board right now. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have one because most of my people, they, they work. And the pay is not. And they take the day off, it wasn't sufficient. I know.
Because I served on that board, um, they break up into three groups. Commercial, and two reservations, so if one missing, then that means it's on.
And I know, and nobody on board is, I understand.
What's your question?
So out of, um, the nine thousand here that we have on our board, you reached out with one one two?
Can you correct her please? That's a, uh, she started answering your phone calls for your board of workers. Don't, I, I, me. I'm on, I'm on, I, I have the floor.
Go ahead, Ms. Burt.
So, since you, my board got about the nine thousand in her board. Over a thousand, free call.
What's your question, Ms. Burt?
Here she go.
I mean, again, this is what, what we get, if you don't stop it. And so as we talk about, so the second board, all my seats are ready.
She, the president, the rule person, say, I have the floor, not the rules. I have the floor, it's my time.
Go ahead.
Thank you. But she gonna just blur out a question that was just ridiculous, my nine is none of your business.
Please, just stick to the resolution.
Council, do you have to counsel Murphy? Because I was having dialogue with him, since he's reasonable, who's ever been there. It is difficult because people work. And there's a commitment to this. And now with the board boundaries being a little bit off, I understand the importance of it. Chelsea, I mean, I, I, and I, people don't wanna serve on the board, a lot of people don't. I know that, Julie, you've got in the ethics board, someone, you have been a time coming out. And so it is just a fact, so if we gonna put out, let's put out there, there are people, you know, she worried about, oh, we're doing a whole bunch of stuff, we're about to move on to the point. You do your job, okay?
Are you done?
No, I'm not done, because she's still there running her mouth, and you need to correct her with a rule itself. But then she wanna have like the rules. So when it comes to this board, um, he, he couldn't correct nothing.
Uh, Madam Chair, go to clerk. So it is, how many hours does it take to say, does it mean?
Um, yeah, that's a little bit better to answer, but I know they have to mean like three days at least every time. It just depends on how many people show up for the hours, but they do, uh, I do, uh, the payroll for them.
Right.
And, um, I really just, it's, it's more than one review. Those workers that I have in the part of, that work the, uh,
I know I have to put someone, I actually put someone to people, I believe, they know that I'm not, because of their job. They were, I worked in the state of Michigan. And she didn't wanna take off because of, I mean, she made thirty-four hours an hour. And then to do this, she did not. So, um, some of the boards are hired, they are hard to deal. And so, um, I think increases, I think, increases will necessarily help, um, because some of those do, some people just don't want, you know, wanna serve on board. Just like I even think with the ethics board, there was a person saying that they were gonna resign yesterday. You know, people don't wanna serve on board.
This is just for the board reviews, um, election, the people that I work in, of course, also, that work, um, beyond elections, I have part-time people that work, that work many weeks before and after election. They also get the same pay as the board review.
Now you had sent me someone, where did that person come from? I think.
For the board review, that would have been an election worker, we were, uh, had to come up with some names of people that we were in boards that, that we were familiar with, first suggested for board review. So those, that would have been an election worker that's worked with us.
Do you advise we wait until after we figure out board, second board, old, old map, new map, or?
For this?
Resolution?
Mm-hmm, no.
Because again, this is not just for the board review people, this is for people that work at my office.
Okay.
So I have someone who's been working there for more than ten years, and she's still making eleven eighty, you know.
From ten, you?
And how many people have got a raise?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I, I think I got a name, um, I think maybe for, um, Byron, Kirkland. I heard, um, Doris Tanya, she's passionate over there on the other row, and I think, um,
I know she is.
Tyrone Kirkland.
Just take care of that upside, um, let's deal with this.
We, we on, um, the election, so we have this discussion, now, so I'm gonna talk about.
The reason why I'm saying that, Mr. Murphy, is because what if this person is asked and turns down? Or is embarrassed because she's.
I'm just giving her a name.
That's what I'm saying, let's do it, a late council, right?
I don't know, I don't wanna do it away from, so I wanna do it now. So my name for you is real, is Byron Kirkland, you reach out.
Uh, she ain't got emotion in her love. She, she ain't got emotion in her love.
Any other discussion in the first round? Um, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have.
Right, wildebeest.
So, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this.
Uh, excuse me?
Councilwoman Lewis is giving, this is how things start.
Say what?
Councilwoman Barnes, she's making her discussion. Councilwoman, uh, Lewis, you threw a deal. So that's how these arguments start. Instead of you sitting there with your mouth closed, because you didn't have to say what you said. Yeah, I said it. That's ridiculous. It's childish.
She ain't got emotion.
You keep a mess going, you keep mess going. And it needs to stop. It was uncalled.
Welcome back.
So, so, um, yeah, I, I do support this, I mean, it's a work for it, that another reason they can't say? Now, these are actually the workers that work in the office?
Okay, so, it's the, it's the board members.
The board members, okay, okay.
Because of just the way that the county is set up, the people that work in office, the non-full-time employees that work for me more than election day, or the election, they get paid from this, they get paid this amount.
Okay.
So they, they get the same amount as the board review. So, yeah, so I have someone that's been working in the office. Pretty much full-time, just under full-time.
Okay.
For the ten years at this rate.
So, um, and if we ask a question while we're talking about, um, the election workers and, and all of this, this comes out of your budget, right?
So, this particular resolution, I do look at that. Would I pay the board review workers to work the board review? Yes, and yes, the board review, city clerk is the budget for the board review, so yes.
Okay.
But the election workers will come out of the other account for election.
So, but all of this comes out, okay? How many accounts do you all receive, um, clerk down here?
So, council, city council, city clerk election, and board review.
Okay, you all receive three accounts. Do you keep a close check on your accounts?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what about the council account? You know what's going on with your council account? And no one can say, okay, I'm going on a trip without your approval, right? Coming out of the council account. It should go through you first, right?
Correct.
Because you all received that account, right?
Correct. Um, yes. But we're, we're semantics, but yes, I would, um,
Any, any money that's spent in any of those accounts, yes, that I sign off on. Okay. So out of your council account, and all of these accounts, out of all of these, did you sign off on a trip to commute Iowa?
I did not.
Okay.
She did.
All right, I think that needs to be investigated. Um, because you are the city clerk. You overs, you oversee those three accounts. And no money should be moved from those accounts without her approval.
Ms. Winfrey, Clerk, this discussion is on the board review worker.
It is on the board review. It's under the city council account, board review account, and her third account.
It's on the board review.
I'm not, I'm not gonna be quiet about this because it's wrong, and I understand what's happening.
I would suggest that better sits on, um, government operations.
I don't know.
Well, who signed?
I don't know. But we gonna stop it before it get paid.
Who signed?
Um, we're gonna follow, we're gonna finish this discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, because it's not right.
That's your time. I'm gonna, is there any other discussion in the first round?
Don't be.
I'm going to take my time.
My time when I'm talking.
I'm going to be, it's my job to remain, manage this meeting. My, I'm going to take my time to discuss this raise from eleven eighty to fifteen thousand dollars. And then let pay across all the city, um, workers of this fifteen thousand, so I think this is a fair and equitable, um, wage, well, I'm not saying it's fair and equitable, but it needs to equal to all the lower wage across all levels within the city. So I would support this. All right, this is the second round. Any discussion in the second round?
Um, so when we tie in budgets, and we're talking about if the city clerk does not have the monies for each budget in the managers, I think it is within reason to ask, if one budget, if it's not there, that it's gonna have to be pulled from another. So we do need to speak about moving Iowa, the trip into a budget who signed off, if it's approved. We need to do that. I'm done.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is the vote, to send two four zero zero four one to counsel. Ms. Winfrey, Clerk?
Yes.
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 It's time for a drink, man.
The vote is five yes, zero no, that ends all of work, um, it'll be done at the finance committee, and I hear by, at nine twenty-four.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call.
I need a motion.
You should have did it without objection.
Do it without.
Do, do it without objection.
Let's do it without objection.
Roll call, yes, I did. I made the motion.
Yes.
And how many forms is it?
Yes.
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no. Um, finance committee is adjourned at nine twenty-five.
Oh, my goodness. Hey, government ops, let's go. Hey, government ops, let's go.
Come on, let's keep it rolling.
Government ops, let's go.
Government op.
Let's go. Candace Lee. Oh, Candace Lee.
All right, I'm gonna call this, um, legislative meeting for order.
Oh, government ops. Oh, man.
Mr. Mason.
President.
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 Vice President. That's what they're in bad time, you have five minutes, President.
So, um, now is the time that we will, um, hear from public speaking, is there any public speaking?
I'm gonna still talk.
You didn't become a little more, a little, and, uh, Mr. Murphy, what you said about, about the situation over there at the, uh, the center, about the hundred and something houses? We flipped, we, we grew business in, just like Burton Field House. Nobody stepped up when the people in the county didn't go throw the property away. People like Nelson had to step up and give tone, give it to him. There's a whole lot of Nelsons out there. I know about three or four, I won't mention their name because it might come up if I mention that, Ricky Nichols. And, uh, as one of, and one of them, they went gay, and the other one there, uh, Masalas. They got their own football team and their coaches in it, and Ricky Nichols like, if he sees something. I played football with the guy when I was seventy years old. You hit him hard, he just grinned when he go. You hit him hard, he just grin, but he go, he go chase the thing of the game and make it. And what, he always clean anyway, what I'm trying to say. People like this, uh, people carrying up America, and, and you shouldn't be running your mouth like people. Buying all the things because we a business city, and all that junk, ain't nobody peddling it. Matter of fact, McQueen Theater, go to a movie stock, I mean, drummer stopped tomorrow about the Saints on St. John's Street, just go there. And, and you gonna see what's pinned that up, it's free, fuck, yes, you just go there, watch that drum, oh, the Saints on St. John's. And I'm telling you what's playing so popular, at McQueen Theater, it stopped him out, and you know who started that theater, and you gonna see me, by the back, I was down in the mirror, I was watching. The TV, and the dude named White, I was telling a little white woman out there, told me, you can't sit in here, sir, you gotta get out of here, fix my, my uncle was on that TV, I was watching. When I first come to Slick, I come up here in the graveyard, bust out wondering like that, I wonder how my brothers got up here, and the rest of my brother, he was one of them, they act slacks, with them general hospitals, with, holy hospitals, dude, talk. And, and the South Asian army talking about they ain't got no money, and stuff, and the, still the first church that got the Christ up in all St. John's St. Street, brand new. And all, and you talking about holy temple, talking about, they got the funds, and all, and they paying your own money, and you and priestly talking that junk, and talking about your church. Wondering where Mr. Jones coming in, tell you and priestess they do, when you talking that stuff, and all, keep people running circles around the doctor, since I didn't drive them. I wanted to say, I got a trip to go to make it whether all of them fighting, you know, black and white, and you even know where to break them up, because they like that stuff, and just won't get down. Kenya going, shit, officer, his tooth up here, and they talking about, no, stay out of America, you starting a race for it, you jack, you take that.
Next speaker is.
Wakanda forever.
I'm going to talk about this right now, it's in government ops, and I want to catch up before y'all break up, or break home or anything. Uh, in government ops, point is, two four zero zero four. Christopher Martin, the son of Slick, and he cannot use his church as his address.
She's still in the chamber.
She's still in the chamber though.
Well, either way, I'm going to give him it done. Y'all gonna have to hear, y'all gonna have to put these minutes on, uh, city council meetings. Hey, matter of fact, matter of fact, they gotta go catch the flight, man, to Iowa. This meeting is, thank, you know, you know what, man, everybody, let's go down the train.
This is terrible.
But they always want to talk about, y'all, we all break for, I wonder if Ron Congress is going to put that in M Live tomorrow.
This is crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Thank the poor y'all for staying.
President.
The vice president and the president. Broke home.
Yes.
Broke home. This is. See y'all in the morning, family, we gonna bump with y'all, peace.